Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Here are the audience and those that are watching on television. Welcome to the October 7th Gloucester Board of Supervisors meeting. We would like to start with the invocation from Reverend Michael Jackson of the Bethel Baptist Church. But before that, we'll have a roll call. So, Ms. Garten.
Mr. Weinberger.
Here.
Mr. Pizzani.
Here.
Mr. Crisco.
Here.
Mr. Orth.
Here.
Mr. Hudson.
Here.
Mr. James.
Here.
Mr. Meyer. All seven present.
Okay, now we'll have Reverend Jackson give the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening. Just loves everybody. I thank you for the invitation to come. Someone asked me if I was going to preach tonight when I got here, and I told them I didn't think so unless I was moved. And everybody looks like you're in one accord, so I think I'll just offer prayer. Let us pray. I'm a preacher, don't put that on me. Let us bow. Father, in the precious name of our Lord Jesus Christ, we approach the throne of grace today. First, we just want to say thank you for allowing each of us one more day. We thank you, oh God, for life, and we thank you for health, and we thank you for strength. But at this time, oh God, as we gather in this place, we ask that you, through your grace, your goodness, and your mercy, that your love might permeate throughout this meeting place. We ask that by your holy power that you bless this board and anoint each representative, that he or she, his words would be spoken in decency and in order. Bless this meeting, oh God, and those who come to express their thoughts and those desires. Bless the responses, that whatever is done will be done for your glory, for the enrichment of this great county. Father God, I ask that you would bless all of us who call Gloucester County our home. Continue to bring reconciliation to this county, that we may represent Gloucester in a good light to those who visit, that they might have the desire to call Gloucester home one day. But most of all, God, help us all to love one another as you have loved us, that people will identify us not as people who know about daffodils, but people who love, that show one another love. It's in Jesus' name that I pray. Amen. And now, let us say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. God bless.
Okay, gentlemen, we have before us the minutes from the September 2nd and September 16th meeting in front of you. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we'll move to the adoption of the agenda. Are there any items that we would like to have on the agenda, other than what we have here at this point in time? Seeing none, other, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we have consent agenda items here. Are there any issues with the items that we have on the consent agenda tonight? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor of the consent agenda, say, I need a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we will move to our citizen comment period. You have five minutes to speak on any issue tonight, but please remember, we have a number of items on our public hearings, and so if your comments relate to those, please hold your comments to those particular items during the public hearing. And please state your name and your magisterial district, please.
Ted Wilmot. Howard Mowery. Gloucester Point. As you are now preparing to develop your 2015-16 budget, the economy for Gloucester County is showing significant financial changes. The media is posting articles from the populace complaining because you did not fund Woodville Park for concession stands and toilets. They made the right decision. Reviewing the Parks and Recs budget provides data that reveals this department has a revenue intake of less than $300,000 a year with an expenditure near or above $1 million. Oh, miserable. Sorry. Do you, the taxpayer, maintain your household in the same economic manner? The supervisors made the right decision. Additionally, the new budget needs to have each recreational park and beach showing its own revenue and expenditures. Combining and classifying park operations can hide many unknowns. Also, the revenue alone has increased from $200,000 to $450,000, really expenditures from $900,000 to over $1 million. The mass pays a dear price in taxes for a few to play. This department needs to be self-sustaining. Keeping with the budget theme, your finance manager tonight will present a program showing where revenues are down by 1.5%. With this in mind, direction needs to be established, directing the new budget to be reduced by 2% to 5% from the current budget. This will ensure our debts are paid on time and follow the national trend that part-time accomplishes just as much as full-time in many areas of daily work. Consolidation, outsourcing, and public-private negotiated contracts still need to be vigorously pursued for this coming budget year or before. We still banner about the value of the penny. Bringing in $400,000 in revenue, this has been a cry for several years. I do not believe that figure. Will you have the administration provide you with an updated penny value, including a new assessment projection? And I have put on the floor for several years now, the need to have VDOT install solar nightlights at our most dangerous intersections in the county. Short Lane at TCW Road and Route 17, as an example. The Sheriff's Department, the School Division, and the citizens can provide you the listing of these intersections that need immediate attention. Your efforts to pursue this initiative will be appreciated by all the citizens. I thank you for the time.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Nathan Brown from the Ware District. I see we have an unassigned fund balance of, what, $18 million, which, and before y'all decide we're gonna spend that, I think you ought to take a hard look at your capital lease for the communications equipment. If you look at it, we only owe four boats. We have three payments left. We have three payments left. It's a little over $4 million. I'm not sure what we could pay that off at, but if it's a capital lease, we can pay it off anytime we want. If you could pay that lease off, you would save yourself a payment of $1,452,000 a year. We're really gonna need that money next year to open a new school and some other things, so that would be a good use of that money, and we could retire that debt and move on with other things. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, members of the board. Ms. Garten, Mr. Wilmot, Don Mitchell, York District. Those of you who've been here a while may recall that a couple of years ago, I gave a series of talks to this board, mostly previous members, on important things about government in a republic, among which are transparency, integrity, a number of other issues. I assume that everybody here takes a look at the Gazette Journal and understands what's going on in Gloucester and our adjoining community of Matthews. I hope you all have noticed that there is a significant bruhah in Matthews about an issue that was sort of snuck through the board at the last meeting, having to do with floodplain regulations for construction. There's a, was a talk that the current occupant of the White House gave in Germany last spring that was widely criticized because of an 18-second cut, in which he basically said that there's a view of society which says that society can only function when government controls everything and tells people what they do. Well, in fact, while I do believe that reflects his personal opinion, he went on to complete the statement that there's an alternative view, which is the view that America has taken, which is the view that individuals have rights, and that the government can't inflict itself upon those rights. I would like to think that that holds true at the national level. I no longer believe that it does, but I would have very much liked to believe that it held true at the level of this board. However, at the last board meeting, there was a statement that causes great concern. I just want to read that statement. I want you to think about it. And I want you to think about it, what it means for private property of everybody in this room, everybody in this county, and everybody in this country, if carried to its logical conclusion. That statement made by a member of the board was, "I understand property rights, but sometimes you have to let people know what's in the best interest for them. Not everyone building homes in those areas is qualified to make that decision. I'm sorry, if there's an assumption that you know more than somebody else about how their resources should be expended, then that's a very dangerous ground to begin to transgress. Anybody who thinks that they can best decide how to spend the labor and resources of another individual had better think about whether what they're really doing is public service." Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Are there any other speakers that would like to talk to the board on issues in general? Okay, seeing none, I will close the citizen comment period, and we'll open with scheduled presentations. The first one will be a presentation on the National 4-H Week by Ms. Krista Gustavin, 4-H agent, and Monae Wilson student.
Good evening, members of the board. Ms. Garten, Mr. Wilmot, Don Mitchell, York District. Those of you who've been here a while may recall that a couple of years ago, I gave a series of talks to this board, mostly previous members, on important things about government in a republic, among which are transparency, integrity, a number of other issues. I assume that everybody here takes a look at the Gazette Journal and understands what's going on in Gloucester and our adjoining community of Matthews. I hope you all have noticed that there is a significant bruhah in Matthews about an issue that was sort of snuck through the board at the last meeting, having to do with floodplain regulations for construction. There's a, was a talk that the current occupant of the White House gave in Germany last spring that was widely criticized because of an 18-second cut, in which he basically said that there's a view of society which says that society can only function when government controls everything and tells people what they do. Well, in fact, while I do believe that reflects his personal opinion, he went on to complete the statement that there's an alternative view, which is the view that America has taken, which is the view that individuals have rights, and that the government can't inflict itself upon those rights. I would like to think that that holds true at the national level. I no longer believe that it does, but I would have very much liked to believe that it held true at the level of this board. However, at the last board meeting, there was a statement that causes great concern. I just want to read that statement. I want you to think about it. And I want you to think about it, what it means for private property of everybody in this room, everybody in this county, and everybody in this country, if carried to its logical conclusion. That statement made by a member of the board was, "I understand property rights, but sometimes you have to let people know what's in the best interest for them. Not everyone building homes in those areas is qualified to make that decision. I'm sorry, if there's an assumption that you know more than somebody else about how their resources should be expended, then that's a very dangerous ground to begin to transgress. Anybody who thinks that they can best decide how to spend the labor and resources of another individual had better think about whether what they're really doing is public service." Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please. Are there any other speakers that would like to talk to the board on issues in general? Okay, seeing none, I will close the citizen comment period, and we'll open with scheduled presentations. The first one will be a presentation on the National 4-H Week by Ms. Krista Gustavin, 4-H agent, and Monae Wilson student.
Good evening, members of the board. Ms. Garten, Mr. Wilmot, Don Mitchell, York District. Presentations actually going to be made by Monae, but I wanted to thank you for giving us the opportunity to celebrate both 100 years of extension and National 4-H Week. So, it's an honor to introduce Monae. Monae is one of our 4-H All-Stars. She's a senior member of Gloco 4-H Horse Club, and this year she was elected, she has a Virginia 4-H Cabinet shirt on, she was elected to serve as an ambassador for 4-H for the Southeast District, which is one of the largest districts for an extension, some 44 counties, I believe. So, it's a real honor to be elected to that position, and as the district ambassador, she's tasked with being a spokesperson for 4-H from Portsmouth to Henrico and pretty much everything on the side of I-95. So, we're delighted to have her speak for us tonight. Turn it over.
Hi, my name is Monae. I am the, one of the Southeast ambassadors, and this week is 4-H Week, and I decided to come and speak to all of you, and thank you for supporting for 4-H. Well, 4-H is a community of young people across America who are learning leadership, citizenship, and life skills. In 4-H, there are many different types of 4-H. There is horse 4-H, like I do. There's livestock that include cattle, sheep, pigs, along with many others. Livestock goes to State Fair. Just recently, this weekend, they were at State Fair. And there are many opportunities in 4-H, such as State Cabinet, which I'm a part of, National 4-H Congress, Virginia All-Stars, International Exchange Program. There's district presentation contests, along going further to state and Southern Regionals, such as public speaking and presentations. 4-Hers also do project books every year. There are contests, Hippology Horse Bowl. Hippology is the study of horses, along with horse judging. There's also the State 4-H Horse Show that can lead to Southern Regionals, where all the southern states come together. And I've gone a few times for presentations. Here we are at Hippology. Bit nervous. There's also camps, 4-H camps, that, many of which I have attended, where young people come to learn, learn to be a leader, ride horses. Now, as Southeast Ambassador, I am part of the State Cabinet, and I go to 4-H Congress once a year. And as ambassador, I represent Southeast District, and I have, I have to do four outreaches, and this would be one of them. I became a Southeast Ambassador this year, and I am very proud to be one of them. Thank you again for allowing me to be here tonight, and thank you for supporting 4-H.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Any comments from the board?
What, what's, um...
Mr. Pizzani.
Are you a senior? Where do you, where are you?
I'm a senior, and I'm 18 years old.
18. And so you're now ambassador for the Southeast Region for Virginia?
Mm-hmm.
And where's the National Congress gonna be?
National Congress is at Virginia Tech.
Virginia Tech. Thank you. Very good.
Mr. Hudson.
I think you did a good job. Do you ride Western or English?
I ride Jim Canna. I've rode, I've ridden English before, but for the most part, I ride Jim Canna, which are games on horseback. I do a pad in as fast as I can.
Thanks.
Thank you again, and keep up the great work.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move on to the next presentation. Ms. Duzie Ortiz, Planning Director, on the Community Planning Month Activities.
Good evening. That's kind of a hard act to follow, but I want to be ambassador for planning. It's also Community Planning Month, so our department partnered with the Parks and Rec Department, the EDA, and the library to do some activities for Community Planning Month, and everything's in your packets, I'm not gonna read all this, but it's also available online. We've participated in Community Planning Month for the past six years. Mostly, it's been just a display at the library, and then information, and the board passes proclamation every year. So, this year, we're actually trying to do something a little more. We're doing a weekly flyer and a community ambassador challenge. So, the challenge essentially is, you visit eight sites in Gloucester. We try to focus, the national theme is health and prosperity, so we focus more on health and trying to visit parks and county sites. Also, try to encourage people to come to public meetings, and the recycling center and places like that. So, if you visit eight of those sites and bring it into our office, we have a raffle once a week for things like a free kayak rental or a Parks and Rec certificate, and then the EDA has given us funding for a grand prize at the end. We're gonna get a basket of stuff from the tourism office or shop. So, basically, every week, we do a what is planning, and we had the, first was last week, and recommend come to the Planning Commission, and we actually did have a full house. I don't know if it was because of this, but, and then this week is about who plans, and kind of talks mostly about, everyone is a planner, and trying to, again, encourage people to participate in planning in Gloucester County. And then the next would be why, and then how, and then when we plan. So, essentially, we're just trying to get people to go to our website and do the challenge and learn more about planning, and just hopefully, as the years grow, be able to do more for Community Planning Month. Any questions?
Gentlemen, any questions?
Thank you.
Seeing none, thank you. Okay, we're gonna move on to our regular agenda. The first one's an application for the establishment of a no-discharge zone in Sarah Creek and Perron River by Mr. Phil Olzak, and from the Go Green Advisory Committee, and would like to make a statement to the audience. We have a lot to do tonight, and I would very much ask that the audience respect the speakers and the discussion among the members, and keep your conversation. If you'd like to talk, please excuse yourself. We have a lot to do today. Okay, moving on, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Ms. Garten, Mr. Wilmot, Don Mitchell, York District. As you are now preparing to develop your 2015-16 budget, the economy for Gloucester County is showing significant financial changes. The media is posting articles from the populace complaining because you did not fund Woodville Park for concession stands and toilets. They made the right decision. Reviewing the Parks and Recs budget provides data that reveals this department has a revenue intake of less than $300,000 a year with an expenditure near or above $1 million. Oh, miserable. Sorry. Do you, the taxpayer, maintain your household in the same economic manner? The supervisors made the right decision. Additionally, the new budget needs to have each recreational park and beach showing its own revenue and expenditures. Combining and classifying park operations can hide many unknowns. Also, the revenue alone has increased from $200,000 to $450,000, really expenditures from $900,000 to over $1 million. The mass pays a dear price in taxes for a few to play. This department needs to be self-sustaining. Keeping with the budget theme, your finance manager tonight will present a program showing where revenues are down by 1.5%. With this in mind, direction needs to be established, directing the new budget to be reduced by 2% to 5% from the current budget. This will ensure our debts are paid on time and follow the national trend that part-time accomplishes just as much as full-time in many areas of daily work. Consolidation, outsourcing, and public-private negotiated contracts still need to be vigorously pursued for this coming budget year or before. We still banner about the value of the penny. Bringing in $400,000 in revenue, this has been a cry for several years. I do not believe that figure. Will you have the administration provide you with an updated penny value, including a new assessment projection? And I have put on the floor for several years now, the need to have VDOT install solar nightlights at our most dangerous intersections in the county. Short Lane at TCW Road and Route 17, as an example. The Sheriff's Department, the School Division, and the citizens can provide you the listing of these intersections that need immediate attention. Your efforts to pursue this initiative will be appreciated by all the citizens. I thank you for the time.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Nathan Brown from the Ware District. I see we have an unassigned fund balance of, what, $18 million, which, and before y'all decide we're gonna spend that, I think you ought to look at, take a hard look at your capital lease for the communications equipment. If you look at it, we only owe four boats. We have three payments left. We have three payments left. It's a little over $4 million. I'm not sure what we could pay that off at, but if it's a capital lease, we can pay it off anytime we want. If you could pay that lease off, you would save yourself a payment of $1,452,000 a year. We're really gonna need that money next year to open a new school and some other things, so that would be a good use of that money, and we could retire that debt and move on with other things. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, members of the board. Ms. Garten, Mr. Wilmot, Don Mitchell, York District. Those of you who've been here a while may recall that a couple of years ago, I gave a series of talks to this board, mostly previous members, on important things about government in a republic, among which are transparency, integrity, a number of other issues. I assume that everybody here takes a look at the Gazette Journal and understands what's going on in Gloucester and our adjoining community of Matthews. I hope you all have noticed that there is a significant bruhah in Matthews about an issue that was sort of snuck through the board at the last meeting, having to do with floodplain regulations for construction. There's a, was a talk that the current occupant of the White House gave in Germany last spring that was widely criticized because of an 18-second cut, in which he basically said that there's a view of society which says that society can only function when government controls everything and tells people what they do. Well, in fact, while I do believe that reflects his personal opinion, he went on to complete the statement that there's an alternative view, which is the view that America has taken, which is the view that individuals have rights, and that the government can't inflict itself upon those rights. I would like to think that that holds true at the national level. I no longer believe that it does, but I would have very much liked to believe that it held true at the level of this board. However, at the last board meeting, there was a statement that causes great concern. I just want to read that statement. I want you to think about it. And I want you to think about it, what it means for private property of everybody in this room, everybody in this county, and everybody in this country, if carried to its logical conclusion. That statement made by a member of the board was, "I understand property rights, but sometimes you have to let people know what's in the best interest for them. Not everyone building homes in those areas is qualified to make that decision. I'm sorry, if there's an assumption that you know more than somebody else about how their resources should be expended, then that's a very dangerous ground to begin to transgress. Anybody who thinks that they can best decide how to spend the labor and resources of another individual had better think about whether what they're really doing is public service." Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please. Are there any other speakers that would like to talk to the board on issues in general? Okay, seeing none, I will close the citizen comment period, and we'll open with scheduled presentations. The first one will be a presentation on the National 4-H Week by Ms. Krista Gustavin, 4-H agent, and Monae Wilson student.
Good evening, members of the board. Ms. Garten. Presentation's actually going to be made by Monae, but I wanted to thank you for giving us the opportunity to celebrate both 100 years of extension and National 4-H Week. So, it's an honor to introduce Monae. Monae is one of our 4-H All-Stars. She's a senior member of Gloco 4-H Horse Club, and this year she was elected, she has a Virginia 4-H Cabinet shirt on, she was elected to serve as an ambassador for 4-H for the Southeast District, which is one of the largest districts for an extension, some 44 counties, I believe. So, it's a real honor to be elected to that position, and as the district ambassador, she's tasked with being a spokesperson for 4-H from Portsmouth to Henrico and pretty much everything on the side of I-95. So, we're delighted to have her speak for us tonight. Turn it over.
Hi, my name is Monae. I am the, one of the Southeast ambassadors, and this week is 4-H Week, and I decided to come and speak to all of you, and thank you for supporting for 4-H. Well, 4-H is a community of young people across America who are learning leadership, citizenship, and life skills. In 4-H, there are many different types of 4-H. There is horse 4-H, like I do. There's livestock that include cattle, sheep, pigs, along with many others. Livestock goes to State Fair. Just recently, this weekend, they were at State Fair. And there are many opportunities in 4-H, such as State Cabinet, which I'm a part of, National 4-H Congress, Virginia All-Stars, International Exchange Program. There's district presentation contests, along going further to state and Southern Regionals, such as public speaking and presentations. 4-Hers also do project books every year. There are contests, Hippology Horse Bowl. Hippology is the study of horses, along with horse judging. There's also the State 4-H Horse Show that can lead to Southern Regionals, where all the southern states come together, and I've gone a few times for presentations. Here we are at Hippology. Bit nervous. There's also camps, 4-H camps, that, many of which I have attended, where young people come to learn, learn to be a leader, ride horses. Now, as Southeast Ambassador, I am part of the State Cabinet, and I go to 4-H Congress once a year. And as ambassador, I represent Southeast District, and I have, I have to do four outreaches, and this would be one of them. I became a Southeast Ambassador this year, and I am very proud to be one of them. Thank you again for allowing me to be here tonight, and thank you for supporting 4-H.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Any comments from the board?
What, what's, um...
Mr. Pizzani.
Are you a senior? Where do you, where are you?
I'm a senior, and I'm 18 years old.
18. And so you're now ambassador for the Southeast Region for Virginia?
Mm-hmm.
And where's the National Congress gonna be?
National Congress is at Virginia Tech.
Virginia Tech. Thank you. Very good.
Mr. Hudson.
I think you did a good job. Do you ride Western or English?
I ride Jim Canna. I've rode, I've ridden English before, but for the most part, I ride Jim Canna, which are games on horseback. I do a pad in as fast as I can.
Thanks.
Thank you again, and keep up the great work.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move on to the next presentation. Ms. Duzie Ortiz, Planning Director, on the Community Planning Month Activities.
Good evening. That's kind of a hard act to follow, but I want to be ambassador for planning. It's also Community Planning Month, so our department partnered with the Parks and Rec Department, the EDA, and the library to do some activities for Community Planning Month, and everything's in your packets, I'm not gonna read all this, but it's also available online. We've participated in Community Planning Month for the past six years. Mostly, it's been just a display at the library, and then information, and the board passes proclamation every year. So, this year, we're actually trying to do something a little more. We're doing a weekly flyer and a community ambassador challenge. So, the challenge essentially is, you visit eight sites in Gloucester. We try to focus, the national theme is health and prosperity, so we focus more on health and trying to visit parks and county sites. Also, try to encourage people to come to public meetings, and the recycling center and places like that. So, if you visit eight of those sites and bring it into our office, we have a raffle once a week for things like a free kayak rental or a Parks and Rec certificate, and then the EDA has given us funding for a grand prize at the end. We're gonna get a basket of stuff from the tourism office or shop. So, basically, every week, we do a what is planning, and we had the, first was last week, and recommend come to the Planning Commission, and we actually did have a full house. I don't know if it was because of this, but, and then this week is about who plans, and kind of talks mostly about, everyone is a planner, and trying to, again, encourage people to participate in planning in Gloucester County. And then the next would be why, and then how, and then when we plan. So, essentially, we're just trying to get people to go to our website and do the challenge and learn more about planning, and just hopefully, as the years grow, be able to do more for Community Planning Month. Any questions?
Gentlemen, any questions?
Thank you.
Seeing none, thank you. Okay, we're gonna move on to our regular agenda. The first one's an application for the establishment of a no-discharge zone in Sarah Creek and Perron River by Mr. Phil Olzak, and from the Go Green Advisory Committee, and would like to make a statement to the audience. We have a lot to do tonight, and I would very much ask that the audience respect the speakers and the discussion among the members, and keep your conversation. If you'd like to talk, please excuse yourself. We have a lot to do today. Okay, moving on, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Ms. Garten, Mr. Wilmot. My name is Phil Olzak. I'm in the, I live in the Petsworth District, and I'm, as you've introduced me, I'm here tonight as a representative of the Go Green Committee to talk about no-discharge zones in Sarah Creek and Perron River. With me tonight, and I don't know if any more snuck in, yes, we have two member, one member and one old member of the Go Green Committee. Ms. Christine Tomlinson is gonna help me once you guys start asking technical questions, because I'm truly not qualified, but she's here to back me up, and I appreciate it very much.
And she's from Representing VIMS, correct?
Yes. Thank you very much. Instead of paid advertisement. Before I get started, I'd like to make a couple of statements, sort of as a caveat to the presentation that's in your packet that you've already seen, and what I want to do is, some of you have been board members since we started this three years ago, and most of you are new, so I kind of want to bring everybody up to date to the same point. On August the 7th, which was our last board meeting, we said we would come back to the board with an application, the actual application to DEQ and EPA for your review and a possible public hearing on that application. Well, we're proposing tonight to change that a little bit, as you probably recognized when you saw your resolution. We're not, we don't have the application here tonight, and I'll explain why as we get into this a little bit further, but I wanted to make that clear, that we're not gonna do exactly, or I'm not gonna do exactly what we said we're gonna do on August the 7th. And also, we said that all the work that has been done and going to be done was done, was going to be done under a license plate grant funding program that VIMS was gonna, VIMS was gonna apply for. It turned out that we did not go that route, and actually, all the work that's been done has been done voluntarily, so we didn't use any grant money, and we didn't sign a grant with anybody. VIMS didn't sign a grant with anybody. Okay. And the reason we changed is because the application, as we're now proposing, it has to go to DEQ and to EPA, and EPA is required to hold a public hearing. So, the public hearing will occur in the residence of Gloucester County. Both stakeholder, all stakeholders will certainly be invited. In addition to that, we've compiled, and Christine mostly has compiled, about 30 pages of data to get us to this point we are tonight. To get to the final application is gonna take a lot more work, since we've already talked to DEQ and already talked to the regional administrator, EPA, in Region 3, and a lot more work needs to be done. So, rather than do all that work and maybe not get approval from the board, we decided we'd bring you what we've got and hopefully convince you that this is the route that was acceptable and the way we ought to go. So, if you will accept those premises, you can ask me questions about that later, but that's the premise we're working under. Okay, first slide. Oh, this is it. Ann has shown me how to work this. We're here tonight to talk about the possible applicant, or possible proposal to establish no-discharge zones on Sarah Creek and Perron River. At the August 7th meeting, we talked about this a little bit. We're not bringing application material here, but we are gonna bring a lot of data here tonight to hopefully convince you that this is an appropriate route. First of all, is background. Some of you have this background, some of you don't, but the Federal Clean Water Act prohibits dumping of untreated sewage from boats anywhere in territorial waters. Territorial waters are 12 miles and in, so you can't dump untreated sewage from a boat or any other device, as a matter of fact, in U.S. territorial waters. It's illegal under the Federal Clean Water Act. But they do permit, if you have a marine sanitation device, either a type 1 device and type 2 device, and I'll talk about those in a minute, it does permit those to be dumped within the territorial waters of the United States. So, boat owners who have those devices can dump within 12 miles.
Hapology, horse bull. Hapology is the study of horses along with horse judging. There's also the state 4-H horse show that can lead to Southern Regionals where all the Southern states come together. And I've gone a few times for presentations. Here we are at Hapology. There's also camps, 4-H camps, that, many of which I have attended where young people come to learn, learn to be a leader, ride horses. Now, as Southeast Ambassador, I am part of the State Cabinet and I go to 4-H Congress once a year. And as Ambassador, I represent Southeast District and I have, I have to do four outreaches and this would be one of them. I became a Southeast Ambassador this year and I am very proud to be one of them. Thank you again for allowing me to be here tonight and thank you for supporting 4-H.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Any comments from the board?
What, what, um...
Mr. Bazani.
Are you a senior? Where do you, where are you?
I, I'm a senior. I'm eighteen years old.
Eighteenth. And so you're now Ambassador for the Southeast Region for Virginia?
Mm-hmm.
And, and where's the National Congress going to be?
Uh, Nash, the, the, National Congress is at Virginia Tech.
Virginia Tech. Thank you. Very good.
Uh, Mr. Hudson.
I think you did a good job. Um, do you ride Western or English?
I ride Jim Kana. I've rode, I've ridden English before, but for the most part I ride Jim Kana, which are games on horseback. I, I do a pad in as fast as I can.
Thanks.
Thank you again and keep up the great work.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to the next presentation. Ms. Duzey Ortiz, Planning Director on the Community Planning Month Activities.
Good evening. That's kind of a hard act to follow. But I want to be Ambassador for Planning. This, it's also Community Planning Month, so our department partnered with the Parks and Rec Department, the EDA, and the library to do some activities for Community Planning Month. And the, everything's in your packet, so I'm not going to read all this, but it's also available online. We've participated in Community Planning Month for the past six years. Mostly it's been just a display at the library and then information and the Board Pass Proclamation every year. So this year we're actually trying to do something a little more. We're doing a weekly flyer and a Community Ambassador Challenge. So the challenge essentially is you visit eight sites in Gloucester. We try to focus, the national theme is health and prosperity, so we focus more on health and trying to visit parks and county sites. Also try to encourage people to come to public meetings and the recycling center and places like that. So if you visit eight of those sites and bring it into our office, we have a raffle once a week for things like a free kayak rental or Parks and Rec certificate. And then the EDA has given us funding for a grand prize at the end. We're going to get a basket of stuff from the tourism office or shop. So basically every week we do a what is planning and we had the, first was last week and recommend come to the Planning Commission. And we actually did have a full house. I don't know if it was because of this, but, and then this week is about who plans and kind of talks mostly about everyone is a planner and trying to again encourage people to participate in planning in Gloucester County. And then the next would be why and then how and then when we plan. So essentially we're just trying to get people to go to our website and do the challenge and learn more about planning and just hopefully as the years grow be able to do more for Community Planning Month. Any questions?
Gentlemen, any questions?
Thank you.
Senator, thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to our regular agenda. The first one's an application for the establishment of a no discharge zone in Sarah Creek and Perron River by Mr. Phil Olzak and from the Go Green Advisory Committee. And I would like to make a statement to the audience. We have a lot to do tonight and I would very much ask that the audience respect the speakers and discussion among the members and keep your conversation. If you'd like to talk, please excuse yourself. We have a lot to do today. Okay, moving on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Ms. Garten, Mr. Wilmot. My name is Phil Olzak. I'm in the, I live in the Petsworth District. And I'm, as you've introduced me, I'm here tonight as I'm representative of the Go Green Committee to talk about no discharge zones in Sarah Creek and Perron River. With me tonight, and I don't know if any more snuck in, yes, we have two member, one member and one old member of the Go Green Committee, Ms. Christine Tomlinson is going to help me once you guys start asking technical questions because I'm truly not qualified. But she's here to back me up and I appreciate it very much.
And she's from representing VIMS, correct?
Yes, thank you very much. Instead of paid advertisement. Before I get started, I'd like to make a couple of statements sort of as a caveat to the presentation that's in your packet that you've already seen. And what I want to do is some of you have been board members since we started this three years ago and most of you are new. So I kind of want to bring everybody up to date to the same point. On August the seventh, which was our last board meeting, we said we would come back to the board with an application, the actual application to DEQ and EPA for your review and a possible public hearing on that application. Well, we're, we're proposing tonight to change that a little bit as you probably recognized when you saw your regu- resolution. We're not, we don't have the application here tonight and I'll explain why as we get into this a little bit further. But I wanted to make that clear that we're not going to do exactly, or I'm not going to do exactly what we said we were going to do on August the seventh. And also, we said that all the work that has been done and going to be done was done, was going to be done under a license plate grant funding program that VIMS was going to spot, was, VIMS was going to apply for. It turned out that we did not go that route and actually all the work that's been done has been done voluntarily. So we didn't use any grant money and we didn't sign a grant with anybody. VIMS didn't sign a grant with anybody. Okay. And the reason we changed is because the application, as we're now proposing, it has to go to DEQ and EPA and EPA is required to hold a public hearing. So a public hearing will occur in the residents of Gloucester County. Both stakeholder, all stakeholders will certainly be invited. In addition to that, we've compiled and Christine mostly has compiled about thirty pages of data to get us to this point we are tonight. To get to the final application is going to take a lot more work since we've already talked to DEQ and already talked to the Regional Administrator of EPA in Region Three and a lot more work needs to be done. So rather than do all that work and maybe not get an approval from the board, we decided we'd bring you what we've got and hopefully convince you that this is the route that was acceptable and the way we ought to go. So if you will accept those premises, you can ask me questions about that later, but that's the premise we're working under. Okay, first slide. Oh, this is it. Ann has shown me how to work this. We're here tonight to talk about the possible applic, or possible proposal to establish no discharge zones on Sarah Creek and Perron River. At the August seventh meeting, we talked about this a little bit. We're not bringing application material here, but we are going to bring a lot of data here tonight to hopefully convince you that this is an appropriate route. First of all is background. Some of you have this background, some of you don't. But the Federal Clean Water Act prohibits the dumping of untreated sewage from boats anywhere in territorial waters. Territorial waters are twelve miles and in. So you can't dump untreated sewage from a boat or any other device, as a matter of fact, in U.S. territorial waters. It's illegal under the Federal Clean Water Act. But they do permit, if you have a marine sanitation device, either a type-one device and type-two device, and I'll talk about those in a minute, it does permit those to be dumped within the territorial waters of the United States. So boat owners who have those devices can dump within twelve miles. Except in a no discharge zone. So if we establish a no discharge zone, even those two devices will not be permitted to dump sewage. With those two devices, they will not be permitted to dump sewage in NDZ waters. A no discharge zone, basically this is a definition, waste must be stored on a vessel or disposed of after being treated with a type-one or type-two system before it can be discharged outside of an NDZ. A type-one device, it's a, basically a chemical cuisinator kind of a device that chops up your waste, treats it with chemicals and then allows it to be dumped. A type-one device results in coliform bacteria count of it no more than one thousand bacteria colonies per a hundred milliliters of water. And I know that's sort of a technical definition. Can't be any greater than that from a type-one device. Type-two device is two hundred colonies per a hundred milliliters of water. Put that in perspective a little bit, they will put a swimming ban at Gloucester Point Beach if they find that there is two hundred colonies per milliliter of water at the beach. So boats don't necessarily make a beach contaminated, but it gives you an idea that that's the kind of effluent from the best device available on boats today. A thousand obviously is five times worse than that. So if you had a concentration of boats, let me just say in my estimate, parked around the Gloucester Point Beach and they were all dumping from type-one devices, I think we'd be in a little bit of trouble. In summary, the bottom line is that the Coast Guard will only enforce no discharge zones if you declare that there is one. Have you put up a sign and say this creek or this river is a no discharge zone? They also enforce all untreated dump, dumping of waste up to twelve miles. And the Virginia Marine Police or law enforcement officers can report suspected violators to the Coast Guard and we understand the Coast Guard would follow up as much as manpower would permit. Now, we're proposing two rivers tonight, two body waters, water bodies tonight, Perron River and Sarah Creek. And the reason we picked those two, let me just back up a little bit, the reason we picked those two are they're, they're wholly within Gloucester County, which made it an easy fit for us. If we picked the York River, then we'd have to team up with York, uh, York County. If we picked the Piancetank River, we'd have to team up with Middlesex and Matthews County, which is going to be a more difficult thing to do. So we picked these two as a beginning. We don't know where the future might go, but we picked these two rivers as a, two water bodies as a beginning. In addition to that, these two water bodies have sufficient pump-out stations as best we can determine, and I'll talk about those in a minute too. But why do we want to do it there? Those two bodies of water do not permit shell harvest, uh, water, shellfish harvesting at this time. There are low dissolved oxygen levels in those two bodies of water. These devices don't help that situation. And I say excessive aquatic plants. The problem is it's not excessive. It's not enough aquatic plants to take the bacteria in the sediments out of the water. So excessive is not the right terminology there. I made a mistake. These are maps. Most of you probably know where those creeks are, but this is Sarah Creek. We've drawn a straight line basically across the mouth of the creek and those are the lat's and longitude that define those two points. That whole area in yellow on Sarah Creek would fall under the NDZ designation that we're proposing tonight. Perron River, the same concept, across the mouth of the river, and those are the lat-long designations for that. Benefits. Stakeholder benefits. And I'm going to expand on this a little bit. We found out new information since we had to submit these slides. There are six marinas with pump-out facilities and I want to, I want to expand on that a little bit. Sarah Creek has one pump-out station at dockside condominiums and there are three at York River Yacht Haven. Those are relatively new pump-out stations, as a matter of fact. And those Forbes facilities do not charge. Jordan Marine does have a pump-out station and we understand they have a charge there of twenty dollars. The Perron River has one pump-out station at Crown Point Marina that does not charge for slipholders. They do have a five-dollar charge for non-slipholders that want to use their pump-out station. And this is kind of an interesting idea too. Additionally, the Hampton Road Sanitation District has a floating pump-out boat that will respond to telephone requests on Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays during the summer months and on Sun, on Saturdays during the rest of the year. So they have a phone number. You can call them. They'll send the boat to wherever you are, I guess, if they can find you or you can find them and they'll pump out your boat for you. Other benefits are more likely to have more shellfish, oyster bars in the, in the, in those two streams, those two water bodies. Chesapeake Bay Foundation already maintains an oyster farm in Sarah Creek. They can do it with the water quality that they have, but if we prohibited boats from dumping more coliform into the water, this would certainly support their activity there. And these waterways, like all waterways in Gloucester County, have a variety of public and private activities, including fishing, swimming, crabbing, oystering, et cetera. Downside. I think I've already covered this. Except for some boaters, we have heard from other areas that have had NDZ complain because they have to take their boats to a dump out, pump-out station to get rid of their sewage. That would be inconvenient somewhat. We'll admit that. They have to leave you wherever you're anchored and go to a pump-out station if you desire to pump it out. Certainly be easier for the boater just to dump it in the creek. I don't think we'd like to have that happen. We've talked, I've talked about the charges already. There would be some leisure time and fuel cost impact if they had to go to pump-out stations. What's the process? If you guys agree to pursue NDZ designation for Sarah Creek and Perron River, we will provide the required data to DEQ and EPA. We would do, continue to do the work. We've got about thirty pages of rough draft data now. We probably need another thirty pages. It's going to take some work to do that. That's what we'd like to have happen next. The application, we have to provide pump-out station information, which I've already given you a summary of, boat traffic information. In those two streams, there's about three thousand boats that we've been able to locate in those two streams. Sarah Creek has about twenty-one hundred. Perron River has about eight hundred. So there are a lot of boat traffic in those two streams. Christine has contacted the marinas. We thought we'd have some marina representatives here tonight. She found no negative reaction from any of the marinas that I mentioned in my presentation. Maps, of course, you've seen copies of. We think a statement of need is rather obvious that if we did this, it's going to help the streams and, and not be a large impact on the boating public to pump out their, their, their sanitary devices. And there are condemned fishing fisheries, oyster fisheries in those two streams now and this would certainly help that. The next thing at, would happen after this would be the DEQ would submit a request to EPA and they would hold public meetings, probably more than one. If I, Westmoreland County just went through this process and they've had a couple of public hearings on the application so that there'd be plenty of public input. And I think that's the end of my presentation. I'm sorry I spoke so fast. I know you guys have a big agenda tonight. But I'm ready to take questions and if Christine is going to help me, she'll be ready to help me. Please.
Thanks, Phil. Questions from the board, please. Meyer.
I want to thank you and the Gloucester Go Green Committee for your excellent work to this point. A mitigation of the inconvenience factor, of course, is that anybody can take the boat to the mouth of the creek and into the bay and discharge there. They don't have to go to the docks. So I think this is an example of an area where it just makes sense to try to preserve the estuaries to the extent that we can and at a relatively low cost. So I'm in favor of proceeding with what you're doing there.
Thank you, Mr. Myers.
Mr. Hudson.
I'm also in favor, but I have a question. I know you mentioned earlier that you chose Perron and Sarah Creek because of being wholly in Gloucester. Why, why wasn't the Severn River considered?
Come up, come here.
Was it because of boats, the number of boats or the volume of water?
We chose them because they were close to each other. They have marinas and they're impairments. Severn is much larger, so it's going to be a bigger undertaking. So we decided to start off with those two.
And I don't think, now, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think the Severn River has maybe only one or...
Only one marina.
One marina with a pump-out station. And that was primarily, these things have to be relatively close or DEQ gets a little nervous.
Mr. Bazani.
Just two questions. What is the, who, who does the coliform count? Who, who will, who will actually do that?
The Division of Self-Shelf fish Sanitation.
And that's run by?
Health Department.
The health, our health department?
No, Virginia.
The state health department.
Just for your information, they do, they do water samples once a month, all year round. And then they take an average of what they find and it's usually ten to twenty samples per water body.
If someone were washing their boat and they're discharging what I would call gray water, their, their soap detergent, is the EPA going to come down on, on property owners for dumping so-called gray water into the creeks?
Gray water is not included in this. It's only the sewage.
Gray water's excluded. Gray water doesn't count.
Thank you.
Got a question with the, sorry, I'll get to, oh, go ahead, Mr. James. No, go ahead. I'll let you go first. Go ahead. I'm the chair. No, you go.
Phil, I think you did a real nice presentation tonight. I'm glad you did. I had a boat with a, a head of boat on it and I had a holding tank and had to have it pumped out. But I was kind of under the impression that, that that was the thing to do and that, that was what I did. But I think there are a lot of boats around that, that think they have type ones, or type twos, and they probably don't. And they're probably dumping overboard and that's, that's not good at all. But I am behind your program a hundred percent.
I appreciate that, Mr. James.
Thank you for coming.
Along that line, I, I had, I just took my boat out of a boat repair shop today and I spoke to the manager and I said, I got to make a presentation tonight on NDZ. He said, what are those? And he said, I said, well, you can't dump your, your waste if you have an NDZ. And he said, I didn't know you, I thought you could dump it anywhere, you know? So it's a common knowledge thing that one of our big points will have to be education.
Mr. Weinberger.
Have a question and a statement. Question is, the, the banned shellfish area and all that stuff, is that reversible?
Yes.
If, if we implement this?
Yes.
All right. And the next thing is...
With the exception of near the marinas, there's seasonal closures or partial closures just because a marina has boats and there's anticipation of some discharge?
Does, does the count go up and down? Like winter times it's less because there's no boats? The, the other question, not a question, but a statement is, I would like to see a public hearing that we could all be part of because I like to hear what the people that actually live around there say without the EPA. But, but I'm just, that's just a, you know, I don't know if that's possible, but I would, I would like to be able to hear what, what people have to say. But I think you all are doing a good job.
Thank you. Mr. Weinberger, let me just, I got the implication though that you thought boats alone would make the difference in a shellfish area. And I don't think we're ready to say that right now. Boats can have an impact. If there's enough boats dumping, they might have an impact on an oyster bar. But I wouldn't want to give anybody the impression that, that putting this in is going to make oyster buyers, oyster bars open again.
Mr. Bazani.
What, what about waterfowl and deer? You know, Dr. Orth and I had shared a study together. We were looking at a study that a majority of the fecal coliform that enters the bay is not necessarily a human fecal coliform, but a majority of it is waterfowl, deer, raccoons, birds, you know?
It's a combination of septic failures, wildlife, the boats. So we're just trying to address the boats.
Yep. And again, to be fair, I think water life, our waterfowl, farm discharge, those kinds of things, even septic failures, failures of septic tanks has a larger impact than boats do. But you have to start somewhere, we think. And this is one way to do it without a lot of impact on, on, and a lot of expenditure on a lot of, on people's purses. So, but you're, go ahead.
Plus the boats discharge right on the resource. I mean, they're right on the shellfish.
Yeah. If they're fishing out there, they're going to be right over the shellfish. That's because that's where the fish are.
Okay, actually, Chris, you answered my question regarding closure around a marina anyway, regardless of whether we have an NDZ. That's going to be, that's happens. How, how often would the, the health department sample? Is it monthly? And is it at one site or multiple sites? I mean, obviously sampling is, is crucial to opening shellfish grounds.
Yeah, they regularly sample and regularly put reports out and they have regular sites that they sample. How often they sample, I'm not sure.
It is once a month. They pick the same sites all the time. And if you go to the website for DEQ or the health department, you can see month to month what, how these go. And I think Mr. Bazani asked, if in the summertime after thunderstorms, it's when it's really worse. In the wintertime, when the ground is frozen and the waters are frozen, creeks and, you know, those kinds of things, you don't get nearly the high levels that you do in the summertime.
And the MSDs discharge formaldehyde and nitrogen and things that they don't remove in addition to the excess fecal coliform that's not removed. So it's more than just one thing we're trying to eliminate in the water.
Right. And I think, you know, once we get to that point, if we still do see high coliforms, there is a potential to understand, you know, based on DNA analysis, who's doing what? So, but yeah, I think what you've done is great and I look forward to it. And so any other questions, board? Because we have a resolution in front of us.
Make a motion to accept the resolution on page thirty-eight.
There's a motion to accept. Is there a second? Okay, gentlemen, is there any further discussion on that resolution? I see no other discussions. So Ms. Garten, poll the board, please.
Mr. Bazani.
Yes.
Mr. Crisco.
Yes.
Mr. Orth.
Yes.
Mr. Hudson.
Yes.
Mr. James.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Mr. Weinberger.
Yes.
Motion passes seven-zero.
Okay, go forth and keep us posted.
Very much. Appreciate that.
Okay, we'll move on to item B, financial condition at the end of the fiscal year 2014. Ms. Callaway, who's the accounting manager. And as you know, Ms. Champion retired effective September thirtieth. And we wish her well and welcome to the board, Ms. Callaway.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Orth, members of the board, Ms. Garten, Mr. Wilmot. This evening I would like to share with you the how Gloucester County ended fiscal year 2014 financially and additionally a little bit more about the finance department's immediate plans for the future. Each year, beginning in July, we begin the process of closing our financial records and preparing our financial, annual financial report known as the CAFER, the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. The Virginia General Assembly enacted legislation designated to improve county financial management by providing a framework for an efficient and effective system of budgeting, accounting, and fund dispersal. This code is what requires an audit by an independent CPA. So therefore, throughout the year, we, you are provided with interim financial statements which are prepared on a cash basis and not audited. Annually, we must prepare financial statements in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles with input also from the Governmental Accounting Standards Board and the State Auditor of Public Accounts and the Controller General of the United States. So in other words, we have several different authorities that govern the reporting principles that make up our financial statements. Once this annual financial report is completed, we then move forward with the other required filings for various authorities. To give you an idea of our schedule of events, we begin immediately after June thirtieth with converting our financial statements to generally accepted accounting principles. This involves a series of revenue and expenditure accruals as well as many other adjusting entries. To give you some examples, since June thirtieth, we have picked up thirteen point nine million dollars in revenue accruals and seven point three million in expenditure accruals. To give you examples of what these are, an example of a revenue accrual is a sales tax that may be collected in June, but it's not paid to Gloucester County until August twentieth. An example of an expenditure accrual is an August paycheck for a teacher that maybe works ten months, however, is paid over twelve months. The teacher's last day for the school year may be mid-June, however, they will receive... The teacher's last day for the school year may be mid-June, however, they will receive pay for that work in August. So, generally speaking, a lot does happen in the first two weeks of July, and then moving forward, on July 14th, we did have the independent auditors come and visit us for their preliminary fieldwork. In the weeks following, we continued several reconciliations and adjustments, and by September 15th, we had 99.9% of our figures complete and reconciled. The auditors visited that week for their final fieldwork, and moving forward, we then spend October compiling various schedules and exhibits that you see in the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, and we then provide a transmittal letter and work on the notes and the financial statement, statements and statistical tables. This draft we are planning to, we are working on now, and we will send it off mid-October to the auditors, and they will begin their review. While they are working on that review, we then work on the management discussion and analysis, and this is provided to the auditors near the end of their process. Then the work finally begins on the comparative cost report for the Auditor of Public Accounts. In December, the report is then published and distributed, and the auditor will be at your first December board meeting to present that report, and then all of our special reporting requirements are completed by the end of the year. This is just a disclaimer, because I would like to remind you that tonight I am presenting preliminary figures for June 30th of 2014. These are very good figures, we have reconciled them, but the presentation you see in the annual report in December may be slightly different from what you see tonight, and with that being said, we may adjust something if we, something comes up between now and that time, so I did want to provide this disclaimer to let you know about that. This table presents the final budget and actual results from the general fund operations, and this resulted in a positive change in fund balance at June 30th of 2014. The actual general fund expenditures came in under budget, and we do want to let you know that we encourage the budget holders to budget for what is necessary to complete their mission, but they also must address uncertainties, as we know, and so, we then encourage them to spend wisely, and only on what is necessary, and we definitely do not encourage any type of use-it-or-lose-it environment, so we do feel that the budget holders should be committed on their efforts. As you can see from this table, general fund revenues did exceed general fund expenditures by $1.3 million in fiscal year 2014. We came in a little over $1.2 million with our, our property tax collections for 2014. The majority of this, we attribute to a larger-than-expected value for public service property, and higher-than-expected collection percentages for personal property. These figures do not include the amount of tax that is reimbursed under the Personal Property Tax Relief Act program. As you may remember, in 2005, the Virginia General Assembly enacted significant changes for the car tax program, and beginning in 2006, the Commonwealth of Virginia capped this cost of the car tax relief program, with Gloucester County receiving a little more than $2.7 million. And I also wanted to give you a couple reminders on the valuation of the properties. The State Corporation Commission, in conjunction with the Virginia Department of Taxation, establishes real and personal property tax values on property that is owned by regulated public utilities. This includes electric, telephone, and water companies. The Virginia Department of Taxation also establishes annually a sales assessment ratio. This ratio is then used to establish current market value on public service corporation These local taxes that you see here, we consider to be a good measure of our local economy. We, I will go into a little more detail in future slides, but this is a great summary of our collections, that you also have some additional information on these numbers in your board packages. I did want to make one note on the bank stock tax. Banks are required to file returns with the Department of Taxation by March 1st, and to pay tax to the county by June 1st. The changes made by the General Assembly throughout the years have made this, the process of estimating this particular number very difficult. To give you an example of why, the mergers and acquisitions that may occur with banks create goodwill sometimes, and not, up to 90% of that goodwill can be deducted on the return, so thus creating more difficulty in, in estimating that number. This graph shows our actual sales tax growth for the last 11 fiscal years. As you can see, fiscal year 2014 showed us a steady trend. We levy a 1% local sales tax, as allowed by Virginia state law. These taxes are collected by the Commonwealth of Virginia's Department of Taxation, and then they are forwarded to us on a monthly basis. Our actual sales tax collections for fiscal year 14 were $3,811,000, which means that actual local sales tax receipts increased by 0.9% when compared to fiscal year 2013, and our 2015 budget for sales tax is $3,785,000. And our local sales tax revenue, I would like to mention, accounts for 6.3% of the county's general fund budget for fiscal year 2015. The communication sales tax is the result of a restructuring of local consumer taxes on telephones and communication equipment. It took effect in January of 2007. A new 5% communications and sales in-use tax is being paid by consumers of landline, wireless phones, satellite TV, and radio services, and other communication services as well. The revenues from this sales tax are all received by the Department of Taxation. Our share of the receipts is proportional to our percentage of statewide total collected from the eliminated taxes in fiscal year 2006. For 2015, we have budgeted an amount of $1,214,000. The meals tax, a 4% meals and beverage tax was added effective February 1st of 1997. The amounts collected for meals tax continue to hold steady. Actual results did come in level with fiscal year 2013. We collected $1,857,000 in fiscal year 14, and we have budgeted $1,851,000 for fiscal year 15. The recordation tax, these are fees that are levied on a buyer for documents recorded at the clerk's office. The principal, principal fee service is based on real estate transfers and filings of deeds of trust. We collected $330,462 in fiscal year 14, and we have budgeted $350,000 in fiscal year Building permits saw a slight increase over fiscal year 2013, and hopefully, some promising figures moving forward into the future. The actual was up from fiscal year 13 by $29,750. To give you an idea, moving into fiscal year 15, July of 2000, July, this past July, we saw revenues of $18,646, and this August was $21,230. Business license taxes are charged per the local ordinances to all businesses in the county, with varying amounts being charged. Fiscal year 2014 collections were $1.5 million roughly, and in the fiscal year 15 budget, we have budgeted $1,546,000. The business license taxes make up 2.6% of the general fund budget for fiscal year The total amount of general fund expenditures for fiscal year 2014 came in $2,175,000 under budget, which is 3.7% less than what we budgeted. This slide gives a good summary of the general fund by function. I would like to point out that the education line in this table does include the community, community education department, cable services, and support for the Rappahannock Community College. The local transfer to school operating fund is also included in the transfer to other funds. I also wanted to note that no expenditure here exceeded appropriations in any function for fiscal year 2014, and this expenditure savings is a result of many things that the county continues to do in order to save citizens' money by continually looking for cost savings. This slide breaks down the transfers to other funds into the individual transfers. Social Services is one that I wanted to note here, it has a very unique circumstance. Thirty-seven percent of their budget is based off of federal reimbursements for various compensation and program costs. We set our budget in April of every year, and they sometimes do not know until maybe October, when the federal budget is finalized. So therefore, uncertainties at the federal level make a significant difference in their budget. Another factor with social services includes the turnover in staff, as we all know, social, social work can be a very difficult line of work. In the capital fund here, $300,000 is included as a grant match for the Woodville Park. This was not used as expected, and it was appropriated again in fiscal year 15. This gives you a, a listing of the expenditure results for the other funds. We did not overspend in any category, and I do want to note that the utilities fund here is incomplete. We are waiting on the actuarial report for the other post-employment benefits expense. We have followed up, and we will update accordingly when we receive that calculation. The school construction fund, as we remember, the Page Middle School was heavily damaged in 2011 by a tornado. Shortly thereafter, we consulted with the auditors, and Joanne Wright from the schools got together with the finance department and decided to capture all of the costs associated with this event, and what is known now as the School Construction Fund. This is a summary of that fund at June 30th of 2014. A portion of the Series 2013 School Bond was also to be used for various school HVAC and roof needs. This is a very large-scale project, and it includes upgrades and replacements at Petsworth Elementary School. The remaining money has not been assigned to a project. Lastly, I wanted to provide a fund balance analysis for the general fund. This analysis shows an unassigned fund balance at June 30th, 2014, of $18,000, $18,279,000. This is approximately 18.1% of our fiscal year 15 governmental funds budget. Our fund balance policy requires an unassigned fund balance for the general fund at June 30th, sufficient enough to provide a stable financial base for the next year. The policy requires a target of 12%, and a minimum of 10% of the expected governmental fund expenditures for the next fiscal year. To give you a comparison to the previous year, our fund balance as a percentage of expenditures was 16.5% at June 30th of 2013. So this slide demonstrates compliance to the policy, but it is only part of the story. Some words of caution, the denominator here does fluctuate, the total, as the budget falls, the percentage increases, and as the opposite happens, the budget grows, so it does change.
Mr. Bazani has a question.
Could you, for the public's benefit, define what an unassigned fund balance is?
I can do that, one minute. This definition, I found it's from the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, so hopefully it's easy to understand. An unassigned fund balance is the residual classification for the governmental, the government's general fund, and it includes all spendable amounts that are not contained in other classifications. So for clarification, other classifications that you will see are non-spendable, restricted, and assigned. So those other types of fund balances are restricted by board action, or by the direction of the county administrator with permission from the board.
So, so an unassigned fund balance, could that-
Mm-hmm.
Could that be just, is that, is that real cash on hand, we have?
No. It is not.
Because of, because of the accrual basis rule?
Yes, because we are on the accrual basis.
So could this, could, so this 18-279, could that be money that has not been spent in our current budget, that will not be spent in this fiscal year?
Can you repeat the question?
Will this money not be spent in this current fiscal year 14-15?
That is at the discretion of the, the board, it would have, it cannot be spent freely, it does need to be decided upon, based on board action.
You, you could appropriate money from your fund balance, so like, once you, this is as of the end of the past fiscal year, once you're into the new fiscal year, you can appropriate some of that money from the fund balance, which reduces it.
So you would, you would roll over some of this money into the new fiscal year? Is that what you're saying, Ms. Garten?
No, I'm saying that if you decided tonight to go buy a piece of land for $2 million, you could appropriate money from your fund balance, and it would reduce about that $2 I'm not answering your question, Emma.
That's okay. So at the end of the, at the end of the fiscal year next year, which ends on June 30th?
Yes.
You anticipate an $18 million unassigned fund balance?
That-
If we don't, if we don't use that money for anything else?
That is the anticipated fund balance for this past fiscal year, June 30th of 2014, as we are still completing-
Of '14, right.
Figures, yes, sir.
For '13, '14?
Yes, sir.
Yes, okay, all right, thank you.
For information, we are a little past 8 o'clock with regard to our public hearings, and I'll allow you just to continue so we can finish this up.
Okay, thanks. Based on what we were just discussing, in order to give you a real-life number, we do need to consider actions that are taken on or expect to be taken after June 30th. I would like to remind you that your current fund balance, balance, policy does mention the excess of 12% may be transferred by action of the Board of Supervisors to the capital fund and assigned for future capital projects, and using excess fund balance enables us to complete projects that may have otherwise been debt-financed. So why do we use fund balance? Two important goals of local government are the maintenance of a stable tax and revenue structure, and the orderly delivery of services to residents. Determining how well our local, state, and federal economies were perform, will perform, and its subsequent impact on our finances is one of the most difficult tasks that we face. Uncertainty always exists, but we can hedge it through the development and use of adequate levels of fund balance. In other words, sufficient levels of unassigned fund balance make us better able to provide fiscal stability. These are the committed fund balances. Subsequent expenditures county is the commit, the capital fund balance committed for future projects, and subsequent expenditures school is the HVAC and roof project. Assigned fund balance, our fund balance policy includes the ability to assign the fund balance. These are amounts that are constrained for a particular purpose by the county administrator, who has been given the delegated authority to assign amounts by the Board of Supervisors. The county capital replacement is the pay-as-you-go fund for vehicles, sheriff's vehicles, and miscellaneous large pieces of equipment. There is a formal county administrator policy for dispersing those funds. There is a formal county administrator policy for dispersing those funds. Park projects are monies that have been received through insurance recoveries but not yet spent, as well as accumulated donations. The utility fund, the miscellaneous line includes the value of a sewer pump station. Total budget for expenses must include the total amount needed for debt service, which is a legal requirement, and the accounting entries at the end of the year reclassify a portion of the payment as a reduction in principal on the balance sheet. We did make the required revenue covenant, but we are moving forward with extreme caution. This is, I did want to make a quick note, this is a little, can be a little misleading because the accounting rules do require that the one million nine hundred eighty-seven thousand in principal payments might be reclassified as reductions in liability on the balance sheet rather than showing them as an expense, although those are monies that are being expended. Some of this is offset by depreciation and amortization, and the debt covenants do require that we have an annual appropriation sufficient to pay both the principal and the interest amount on those covenants. Just wanted to give you one last reminder that the comprehensive annual financial report will be completed by December first this year, and it will, will be formally presented to you at your board meeting in December by the auditor. And I am free to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Calloway. Questions from the board, please. Mr. Bazani.
Going back to the eighteen million unassigned fund balance, let's, let's assume that the board this year does not spend this money.
Okay.
What happens to it?
It will continue to accumulate. So if we end this next year with a more revenues than expenditures, then that amount will add into the fund balance.
So this amount of money will then exceed the twelve percent cushion that we normally would have to have?
Yes, sir.
And the theoretically, the excess could be used for a variety of capital projects or maybe even, dare I say, a tax refund to the citizens?
It may be used for something that, that the board appropriates it.
Thank you.
And generally, I think what we do normally is look at this as one-time expenditures rather than a continuing expenditure. Okay, Mr. Bazani?
I think you did an excellent job presenting this tonight.
Thank you very much.
Excellent.
I appreciate it.
Mr. Crisco?
Yes, I'd like to reiterate, Mr. Bazani, Ms. Calloway, you did, you did a wonderful job, but we have to remember too that we have already earmarked some of this money in the, in the fifteen budget, though. Because if you look, though, we, we have a fund balance only of two point five on the one page that you showed us, correct?
Let me find it.
Uh, this page, I don't know, it's back about, one, two, three, four, five, six, back about seven slides. I just wanted to make, make everyone aware that at June thirtieth, we were only at two point five over our twelve percent, not the six that you see at eighteen point two, because we have already sort of promised this money out in some different areas, correct?
Right, because the eighteen point two million dollars she's talking about is as of June thirtieth. That's at a moment in time.
Okay, yes.
And so since then, we've, you know, you've, there are other things that we've done with it or expectations of things to do with it.
So, so could, so could the result of these fund balances, this unassigned fund balance result from, and I've been toying with this for the last two, three weeks, the difference between our budget year and a calendar year when we levy taxes?
No.
It has to be. It has to be. We have, we have a calendar year, we're levying taxes on, on, well.
Oh, 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 okay. So if the, yeah, if the tax rate changes, it could. If the tax, if the tax rate goes up.
But we will, hopefully, gentlemen, hopefully, when we, when we equalize the tax rate next year, that we make that tax rate effective July one of next year, not clawback to January one. I'd like to do a presentation either on the twenty-first or in our November meeting on the difference between our calendar year budget and, and fiscal year budget, and show, hopefully show you why there could be a difference in how revenues are coming in because of the way we levy taxes on a calendar year versus fiscal year. So I'd like to maybe reserve that, maybe not on the twenty-first, but maybe next month I'd like to present that. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Calloway.
Gentlemen, any other questions for Ms. Calloway? Mr. Meyer?
Well, just to tag on with Mr. Bazani's at, in your presentation or in a presentation from the staff, what are the, what are the options in terms of alignment of your tax year? So I'll call on a calendar year, a fiscal year, a tax year. And if, for example, the tax collection due date was July thirtieth instead of June thirtieth, you know, what does that do to your carryover balances, and what does that do to your system? Does that help us align it better, or what problems does it cause? That type of thing.
It's, I don't want to interrupt you. I, I would say it's difficult for me to obviously answer that in this setting. I am happy to do further research if that's something that would be helpful.
And I thought it'd be something supporting Mr. Bazani's presentation on the twenty-first.
What, what you could do is, if you want to transition to a fiscal year tax levy, you could implement a short, a short fiscal year from like January to June to make the transition, and then from that point to July first on, you then progress to the fiscal year tax levy. So there would be a short period of time, a six-month period where you can do that transition. But the county would have to come up with any kind of revenues projections, they would need to hold them over during that six-month period, so.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bazani. Mr. Meyer, members, any other questions for Ms. Calloway? Again, thank you very much for your presentation. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
And we will move on to the public hearings, starting with the first one, which is the public hearing to consider a vacation of right-of-way adjacent to one-three-five-two Lawrence Road. Mr. Wilmot, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The first of your five public hearings tonight is, as you described, the materials associated with this matter commence on page one-eighty-eight of your agenda packet. Back at your June third, two thousand fourteen, meeting, the board unanimously consented to vacate a right-of-way adjacent to thirteen fifty-two Lawrence Road in the Gloucester Point Magisterial District. This right-of-way is adjacent to a residential property, and that resident in late two thousand thirteen approached the county with a proposition that the county vacate that right-of-way to be assimilated into her residential lot. I checked with the Department of Public Utilities and found that there are no utilities occupying the right-of-way requested to be vacated. I also was told that the county has no use or need for that right-of-way. So on June the third, because of those factors, following the public hearing, he passed an ordinance authorizing the vacation of that right-of-way and imposing a ninety-day deadline within which to record a deed of vacation and to accomplish all those acts necessary to assimilate that vacated right-of-way into the adjacent residential property. Unfortunately, that ninety-day time period expired without those acts having occurred. Therefore, the vacation became null and void by its own terms. The reason why we have a deadline in, in ordinances vacating property is to assure that the property owner affected accomplishes the, the tasks necessary to have that vacation completed and have that property vacated, assimilated into the lot, so that it's not in limbo in perpetuity. Well, because the deadline passed and because the ordinance is null and void, the property owner has indicated that she would like an extension of that deadline. So you have in your packet an ordinance commencing on page one-eighty-nine, which would extend that deadline, and in effect do what you already did on June the third, just give them a little more time. However, in order to pass this ordinance, you have to have another public hearing, at which I anticipate no speakers. So, Mr. Chair, it would be appropriate for you to open the public hearing to consider this ordinance.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wilmot. We now open the public hearing for this particular one. Are there any individuals that would like to speak to this one particular item? So please come forth and state your name, your magisterial district.
My name is Philip Ranson, and I live right across the street from this property. And that property, although the county has no use for it, the subdivision owners in there do have great use for it. We use it for overflow parking. We maintain it, keep the grass cut, and so, you know, it's being used. And in fact, in that subdivision, there are three pieces of property like that that were supposed to have been roundabouts, two of them on Lawrence Road. And the state came down there and put the highways in and just made a loop and didn't do that for what reason I don't know. This goes back to nineteen thirty-seven, that's when the subdivision was recorded. But we're asking that you set aside this, given this property away. We've, we've had a couple of other situations where, you know, we've had to hire lawyers to keep people from encroaching on, on, on our parks. And another thing is, is there are about five driveways that back right out on that circle, and you can't park when, when, you know, when something's going on like fireworks, you can't park around there because people can't back out of their driveway. So we use it for a parking lot, and we've been doing it for years. And so it's not property that's sitting there and it's not being used by anybody. Everybody in the subdivision uses it, uses the other two as well. So I really think that it ought to be left like it is.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Ranson. Any other speakers? Please come forth and state your name and magisterial district again.
Good evening. I'm Harry Morris, lawyer across the street here for some time. This lady could not be here tonight, and I certainly volunteered to come in her place to speak for her in the sense that she is very much in hopes that you will allow her to have this piece of property. She has spent considerable monies on a survey, which I think you have a copy of in your work. I, I had the impression that the decision had been made to allow her to have this property, that this hearing was just to see if the time in which she could take advantage of this would be extended. And I hope you will see fit to allow her to have this property in that I think it had been determined earlier that she should. And we'll certainly get very busy if you allow the extra time and have that deed done within just a number of days. And I hope you will see fit to allow her to have this property.
Mr. Bazani?
With, the comment made by Mr. Ranson, what, what is her interest in, what does she intend to do with this property if, if this goes through tonight? What does she intend to do with it?
Just to, to take care of it, more or less, to make it, to make her property more attractive, more attractive for the community. I think she has, I was under the impression she had been taking care of it, cutting grass and regular maintenance on the property. I'm certainly not questioning what this gentleman says, but that was my understanding. I've never had the privilege of seeing the property, but I think she just wanted to, for area beautification, more or less, continue to maintain this property and take good care of it, exert dominion over it so that it would, would not be mistreated or become an eyesore in the community.
Thank you.
Mr. Mark.
Let me see if I've got this straight. Right now, this property belongs to Gloucester County? Is that correct?
It is part of a right-of-way, yes.
Right, but it belongs to Gloucester County?
Yes.
And these people and you, you're asking for us to give it to this lady, and these guys are saying leave it to everybody. Is that correct, or is that?
That's what, that's what he's saying, that everybody has had some access to it previously. I don't know personally.
But if, if we give it to this individual lady, then will these people not have access to it anymore to use it as they see fit?
I shouldn't.
For Dina?
She would become part of her yard, so to speak, as I understand it, and she would maintain it and have it an attractive place in the community.
Mr. Ranson, can you just step forth, please? We have a question.
Mr. Ranson, who takes, who takes care of this property other than this individual here?
I don't know that she's taking care of it. She's planting some shrubs and trees in it.
Who maintains the property then today?
We've been cutting the grass there and maintaining it for years.
So.
At least twenty-three, twenty-four years.
Gentlemen, I'm actually, we should allow the public hearing to proceed, and then when we close the public hearing, we could ask questions, so it's more formality. So let's continue with the public hearing, then if we have further questions.
Let me make one little comment. Mr. Morris, he is talking about how she wants to improve the neighborhood. Each one of you go down there and take a look at that, and look at the property, the part of her property that's on the other side of her house. And that's not helping the subdivision.
Okay.
It's like uncontrolled woods, weeds.
Okay, so let's continue with the public hearing, and other individuals who would like to speak, again, please come forth, and then when we close the public hearing, we can ask questions.
Good evening. My name's Patrick Morosky. I live on Lawrence Road thirteen-twenty-nine, which is right across from the property. I've lived in the neighborhood of my family since nineteen eighty-two, and when I moved in, when I bought the property that I lived on, Steuben, right around the corner, I found that there were several parks in the neighborhood, and that this piece of property we're talking about was part of that park system. I didn't know it was a right-of-way at the time. Many years later, I learned it was a right-of-way, but we were treating it as a park. The whole neighborhood was treating it as a park. And for festivities in the neighborhood, we had parking there. Wayne Hogg, who's sitting back here, has cared for that property by mowing it and picking up whatever teenagers might throw on it, things like that, for many years. And before him, a man named Tommy Morgan, who is now deceased and went to the Gloucester house for a number of years, for decades Tommy took care of it for the neighborhood, and other neighbors pitched in, just like we do on the other parks. We've used it in emergencies such as hurricanes to park our boats, our vehicles, to get them out of our driveways so that if something were to occur, falling trees and things like that, that is relatively open area, and we've used it for that purpose. I've also observed over the years that county vehicles have parked there during snowstorms, when snow was being cleared in the neighborhood, the Waterloo subdivision vehicles have parked there for whatever purpose, to scope out the area and to use it as sort of a, a place to congregate. I see it as a great asset to the entire neighborhood, and my wife and I have done some care to the property over the years, too. We also do things like when, when neighbors have a neighborhood yard sale, we've used that property as a park-like setting for yard sales. So it's been used, it's being used now. I approached the lady in question who has asked for this property when they moved in and they started using this area and said, you know, this, this area is used as a neighborhood park, you may want to talk to other neighbors about it because someone's going to step up and say, hey, what's going on here? Because she started planting things there, which is, you know, neither here nor there, but it's, it basically stops the use that it had. She's planted tree, at least one tree there and some shrubbery and other plants, and it wasn't her property. So in closing, the property has been used since I've known it in nineteen eighty-two as a neighborhood asset. The neighborhood volunteers have taken care of it, and I'd like to see it used in the same way. I'm not leaving the area. I'm going to be here until I die, and I would like to, the property be used as it is.
Okay, thank you very much. Other, other speakers to this public hearing, this one issue?
Ms. Garten, Mr. Wilmot, members of the board, Don Mitchell, York District, again. I wonder, Mr. Wilmot, if you would address the- I wonder, Mr. Wilmot, if you would address the issue of constructive possession, since apparently there's a group here that's had constructive possession of this property for decades.
Are there other speakers, please? Come forth.
Hi, Marsha Mickel, York District. I really don't have an opinion on whether the lady should get the piece of land or not. I don't know enough about it. But when looking through the packet for the Board of Supervisors, I noticed that the plat's already been signed by Mr. Orth and it's already been approved by Ms. Anne Ducey Ortiz, the plat. So how can everything be approved before we even discuss it? That's another thing I think of where everybody thinks, oh, yeah, we're going to get this through, and it's just, let's sign this off, let's sign this off. And I think we need to watch that. No one's approved this yet, so why should it have been already signed, the plat? Thank you.
Any other speakers? I see no other speakers, so we'll close the public hearing and we'll open the floor to the questions from the board now. Yes, Mr. Wilmot.
Looking at the plat, which of course had to be prepared and approved prior to the deed of vacation being recorded pursuant to your board action of June the 3rd wherein you unanimously agreed that you would vacate this right-of-way. Page 192 is the picture which depicts Ms. Majeko's residence at 1352 Lawrence. And you can see that the parcel proposed to be, the right-of-way of the parcel proposed to be vacated consists of a .074 acre parcel on her residence side of Lawrence, there being nothing else between Lawrence Road and that residence. I should point out probably a legal nuance, and that is that what you're being asked to do is to vacate the county's right-of-way. The county has a right-of-way in this property. The county may or may not own the fee in the soil. That is an incumbent upon the county to determine. What you're being asked to do is vacate a county right-of-way, which I've been told the county doesn't need or use. Whether you decide ultimately, whether you decide ultimately to do that again, having authorized it at your June the 3rd meeting, is entirely up to you. But you can see the picture there with the willow tree and the 20-foot pine, and it doesn't vacate, your action would not vacate to the border of Lawrence Road. You'll still see area in there between Lawrence Road and what is labeled Parcel A. Speaking to the public's use of it, county has a right-of-way, county is entitled at this point to use it for what they choose to use it for or not use it. Whether others use it or not certainly is not, none of the county's concern unless and until the county wanted to enforce utilization of its right-of-way, which I understand it doesn't need. So having said that, it's up to the board to decide whether you want to reauthorize the vacation of this parcel, the right-of-way in this parcel, of course, not knowing who owns it. And when the county does a deed of vacation of a right-of-way, it's a deed of vacation and quitclaim, meaning we're conveying any interest we may have in that parcel, we may or may not have any interest in it beyond the right-of-way. So by law, in order for someone to come to the board to request vacation of a right-of-way, you have to have this public hearing. I was glad the public came out and talked about it tonight, so I'd ask that you vote that ordinance up or down.
Thank you, Ms. Wilmot. So questions from the board? Mr. Bizani first.
It's unfortunate that these new sets of facts have come into us tonight. We made a decision last time because we did not have these facts. The fact that the neighbors have been using this property irrespective of whether or not the county owns it or not for at least 10 or 15 years, I'm just kind of wondering, you know, if this is, if this is a parcel property being used by the entire neighborhood, why would this one individual want this property other than to prevent people from parking utility, county utility vehicles there or maybe having a neighborhood barbecue or whatever? These are facts that we just learned today. I know we made a decision last month, but these are new circumstances that we are learning. So do we really want to encroach on the freedom and happiness of the neighborhood back there by not allowing them to use this piece of property?
Thank you, Mrs. Bizani, Mr. James, and then Mr. Weinbarger.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have to echo what Philip says. I didn't realize who was involved with all of this, but I've known Philip Ranson for many years, and if he says he's going to keep the grass cut down there, then you can pretty well believe that he's going to keep the grass cut. If you've ever been by his home, everything on his property is impeccably kept. He does a wonderful job. Wayne Hough and I played football together. I've known him for longer than I really want to own up to. These are some real quality people, and I'm like Philip, maybe we didn't know all the facts. And I feel like, I feel like that this, by leaving it like it is, it will be more benefit to a lot of people. And if we turn it over to one person, then it's not, it's going to cut all of these families out of it. So I think we really need to reconsider this thing.
Thank you, Mr. James, Mr. Weinbarger.
I have a question, Mr. Wilmot. Do we, does the county have any exposure as far as liability on this right-of-way if, you know, somebody was cutting the grass and cut their leg off?
Potentially, the county incurs liability when it owns and operates its property or its interest in property such as easements. This is not a county park. It's a county easement. The county's not using it. Yes, to answer your question, the county has potential liability, albeit probably not significant, when it operates or owns an easement.
Thank you, Ms. Wilmot. Mr. Meyer.
I had no problem vacating the public interest in this property when the public had expressed no interest in the property. But since the public appears to be interested in the property, then I think it would be wrong for the board to go against that interest, part of our charter is to protect their interests.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. Mr. Hudson.
I think it's unfortunate for the property owner, but I think it's a very, the calendar got away from them. But I think it's a great thing for the county and whoever's watching this, in that if there's an issue that's coming up to the board that pertains to you, come to the public meeting, and we wouldn't have this issue. I mean, right now, y'all are fortunate that you're going to have this opportunity for the board to vote again. But, you know, when we had this meeting in June, there was no opposition to this. And the board, you know, I've been to fireworks, Ms. Phillips, I know exactly what you're talking about. So there was never brought up, never even a concern. But now that we're hearing this, you've got to look at it differently. But where I think we need to look at it as a county, and hopefully there's a few people watching, when something concerns you, you need to come to the public comment and voice your opinion. That's the only way the board is going to know something. So please come.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. Gentlemen, any other comments regarding this issue in the public hearing? Okay, gentlemen, we have a resolution that we need to act on. I need a motion to either accept or not accept.
If there's no interest in authorizing it, no one need make a motion.
If we make no motion, then it dies.
Correct.
Okay. Gentlemen, do I see a motion? I see no motion, and the project dies. Correct, Mr. Wilmot?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We will now move on to the next item of our public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The materials associated with your second public hearing, and I won't venture a guess as to how many people may speak at this one, commence at page 199 of your agenda materials. This is an ordinance to consider adding the Canton subdivision located in the Petsworth Magisterial District to those areas of the county in which, which are covered by a leash law, meaning you would not be allowed to let your dog roam free. You'd have to have him under your control in the Canton subdivision. You have the code section in front of you, which is Gloucester County Code Section 3-47, which starts on page 200, which lists those subdivisions within the county covered by a leash law. You'll note that the proposed addition of the Canton subdivision to this list in 3-47 is on page 203. In order to add the Canton subdivision, you need to hold a public hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Wilmot. We'll now open the public hearing. Any citizens that would like to speak to this, please come forth.
Good evening, members of the board. I'm here tonight to speak to you as a citizen. I'm Scott Varner from the Petsworth District and a homeowner in the Canton subdivision. We have a safety problem in our subdivision, and I'm hoping that the Board of Supervisors can help with that. The Canton subdivision is a fully paved subdivision and is ideal for walking or biking with your family, except for the dogs roaming at large through the neighborhood. My wife and daughter have been accosted on several occasions by dogs not properly restrained by their owners. And I'm not just talking about one owner, one dog, I'm talking about several, at least three homes with animals that are not restrained. The dogs are coming off their owner's property and aggressively chasing my wife and daughter while they are trying to walk in the neighborhood. On two different occasions, the same dog, which was a pit bull, came into our yard from a home that was quite a distance away on another street in our subdivision, came into our yard and chased my family into the house. On the second occasion that this happened, the dog left scratches and bruises on my wife's arm where it closed its jaws around her arm. We reported this to Animal Control, but we were told that there was nothing they could do because Canton does not have a leash law and the dog did not penetrate the skin. I have a hard time accepting the fact that we have to wait until someone is seriously injured to do something about it. As a person that has to apply logic every day in his job, that's a very illogical rationale. On another occasion, a different dog from a different home in the neighborhood came out into the road and jumped on my wife's back while they were out for a walk. And while she was out with our, actually, at the time, our daughter was 13 months old. My wife was pulling, pushing her in a stroller. My wife ran to get away from the dog and couldn't return home because the dog was out in the street, so she couldn't return. We called Animal Control, she called me at work. I called Animal Control, but by the time Animal Control got there, it was some time later, the dog owner had finally come and brought the dog back in the home. We've reported this to Animal Control as well, and we also, the neighborhood, have a lovely 200-foot pier in the neighborhood that goes straight out to the Panketank. We love it. They can't actually go to that pier because one of these homes, the one with the pit bull, is right before the pier. So whenever you get near, the pit bull comes out of its yard and chases you down the road, which is just a shame. And I have actually, I like to take care of things myself, you know, person to person. I had approached the homeowners to no avail. It didn't do any good. So I'm here tonight because there's really no other recourse. I find it very odd, honestly. It was surprising when I found out that Gloucester County doesn't have a county-wide leash law for subdivisions that are completely paved. Totally understand, I grew up in the country, when you have large tracts of land and dirt roads, that's a bit onerous, but we have actually paved subdivisions where people walk. They walk there with their children, their families. It was just very odd to me that we did not have a county-wide leash law, and that's, I guess, neither here nor there, but was very interesting to me, just honestly from a liability issue. But I believe this is a public safety issue. I do not want to see any member of my family hurt nor anyone else. We have had several walkers and joggers bitten in our neighborhood. Those folks decided not to report it. I, however, feel like we have a responsibility to ourselves and our fellow citizens to keep those animals from hurting people. And we love dogs. My wife and I are very avid animal owners, you know, but we always have our dogs on a leash. I built my own fence for my dogs, you know, we are very responsible homeowners. So I ask that you support adding Canton subdivision in the Petsworth District as a leash law area. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other speakers that would like to speak to this public hearing?
Once again, Don Mitchell, York District. I have no objection to what the gentleman before me is proposing, but I do have an objection to his comment about finding it astounding that there is no county-wide leash law. Many of us do live with a lot of property. We actually have neighborhood dogs that wander into our house for a bite to eat from the dog's dish, and I have no objections to that. I think the problem here is that when there is development in certain areas of the county, you need to develop some sort of a system that would allow the county to keep track of and require appropriate restrictions in area where such dense and intense development takes place. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other speakers, please? Come forth. I don't see any other speakers, so we'll close the public hearing. And gentlemen, questions regarding the, Mr. Bizani?
I am going to support this resolution, but there's another issue that I think the board should consider in the future, and that's feral cats. We don't have any ordinances that prevent feral cats to be controlled. The only ordinance, the only precaution that anyone would have for keeping feral cats, if you feed a cat, then there's nothing that the adjacent homeowners can do. I have a constituent that lives across the street from about 25 to 30 feral cats. These cats come over to her property, they defecate on her property, they get into her automobile and vomit and have kittens in her car. So no one, you know, she's called Animal Control, they said there's nothing they can really do about it, simply because there's no ordinance that protects her from feral cats. So in light of this, the spirit and intent of this particular thing, we might want to consider looking at our ordinances for control of feral cats in this county.
Thank you, Mrs. Bizani. Gentlemen, any other questions, comments regarding this particular issue? Mr. James.
Mr. Chairman, I certainly feel these people's pain about the dogs and all of that, but that's, property is in the northern part of the county, and it's an area that's pretty heavily hunted by hunters and hounds, and I was just wondering how this would, how this would affect that.
I have no idea. Can I ask Mr. Varner to come forth and comment on that, or, you know, we don't have anyone? I can't.
You can do what you want.
Mr. Varner, do you want to answer that?
I've done a little research. It would not affect any hunting dogs because the state law on hunting dogs would supersede. So if you have anyone hunting, although no hunting is allowed in our subdivision, of course, and there's, I think there's a buffer zone around the subdivision, if hunting dogs are allowed to run, hunters can come onto your property to retrieve their dogs, that doesn't affect hunting. Virginia's very, very big on their hunting dogs, and that state law would certainly supersede that. In any case, this is to do just with homeowners with their own animals, so.
Thank you, Mr. Varner. Gentlemen, I don't see any other hands, so we have a ordinance on the table to be voted on. Is there a motion to accept this ordinance?
How many motion, we accept it?
Okay, there's a motion to accept it. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Okay, see no other comments and discussion. Ms. Garten, pull the board, please.
Mr. Crisco?
Yes.
Mr. Orth?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Bizani?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on to our public hearing on the proposed lease between the county Gloucester and Bay Aging Incorporated. Mr. Brian Lewis, Director of Engineering.
Good evening. Really here just to, for the public hearing on the proposed lease between County Gloucester and Bay Aging. A little bit of background, this property was acquired by the county A little bit of background, this property was acquired by the county in June of 1986. The property owner at that time wished that the property be utilized for senior and our elderly citizens of the Northern Neck Metal Peninsula area. We have had an ongoing relationship with Bay Aging, and this lease really would just continue that and more formalize it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lewis. And we'll open up to the citizen comments on this particular issue. So please come forth if you'd like to speak and state your name and magistrate district. I don't see anyone coming to the podium. And seeing that no one comes to the podium, we'll close the public hearing and we'll open the floor discussion by the board. Mr. Weinberger?
Just a question. I'm looking at the resolution, and I don't see any numbers. Is this a lease that, and do I ask you, Ms. Garten, is this, or Mr. Lewis? The lease that we will agree to, is it the same amount of money this year as it was last year, or is it, how does it work?
There really, there's no money exchanged, no. It's basically a 60-month term for, started, actually, will start back retroactive to the January 1st of 2014 and end on December 31st, 2018, and can automatically be renewed if necessary. Basically, it's just what each party will bring to the table, what we will do, what they will do to ensure that the building is, has certain maintenance and is taken care of.
Do they take care of the maintenance, or?
Parts of it. Just as you go through here, we, for example, they're responsible for telephone and internet connectivity, utility bills. They can't make any alterations to the building without written consent from us. That they agree that the lease premises shall be used exclusively for senior citizen programs. It does talk about, again, the tenant shall be responsible for and save the landlord harmless from and against them in all claims. So it really, just really clarifies what we've basically been doing anyway. It just puts it in writing.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. Any other questions from the board? Yes, fine. I see no other hands going up, so we have a resolution on the floor. Is there a motion to accept? Okay, is there a second? Is there any further discussion on this? Seeing none, Ms. Garten, poll the board, please.
Mr. Orth?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Weinberger?
Yes.
Mr. Bazani?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay, we'll move on to the fourth public hearing for an amendment to the subdivision ordinance that's a pertaining to the requirement of preliminary, for preliminary plats. Ms. Duzi Ortiz.
This code amendment was, is requirement of state code of the General Assembly this past year passed language that essentially prohibits localities from requiring preliminary plats for subdivisions of 50 lots or more. So it's basically, you can't mandate it, but you are allowed to, you know, if they wanted to submit it, they could. So we worked on amending our ordinances to be consistent with state code. Just a little background, a major subdivision is any subdivision of four lots or more, and we require in our current ordinance that major subdivisions go through a preliminary review by the planning commission. So that, again, has to be changed to be consistent with state law. The review by the planning commission is not mandated by state code either. That is something that the county opted to do. Basically, the planning commission has to just look at a subdivision, and if it meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, approve it. There are some areas of discretion, but essentially, it's a ministerial act. The idea when the board passed that was to have the planning commission be more involved in subdivisions and to be aware of the type of development that occurs and see if the ordinances are working or not. And also to make the public, in a public process, even though if you meet the ordinance, the board has, the planning commission has to approve it, but at least the public is aware when development occurs. Where prior to 2000, that wasn't the case. So essentially, the process as it is right now, is you submit a preliminary plan, it goes to the planning commission after review by staff for requirements of the ordinance, then a development plan is submitted similar to a site plan, and it goes through the site plan review process. When all that is done, there's a final plat review to make sure that the plat that gets recorded meets all the, is consistent with the development plans and all the easements and those types of things that are shown on the, on the plan that gets recorded. Some of the potential impacts of this change, and again, it would be voluntary, if somebody wanted to submit a preliminary plat, we would certainly review it, but kind of lack of coordination. We actually spend a lot of time on preliminary plats and make sure that it meets all the ordinances and requirements before it actually gets to the planning commission. We also make sure that the road names shown on the plan are approvable by the E-911. And then also, there are sections of the ordinance that allows the planning commission to make certain waivers and exemptions. So, you know, that, those are just some issues that could occur if somebody chose not to submit a preliminary plan. Also, there would, there could potentially be some loss of revenue, and that's for the board to decide. The way we propose it was revenue neutral. And it would also be harder for the applicant to be vested in a project. Currently, when you get preliminary approval, and we actually have several plats that ordinance have changed since they got preliminary approval, and they are vested for five years, and then the General Assembly has extended that now until 2017. So plats were approved, you know, in the early 2000s are still allowed to be built, even though we changed the ordinances. So this is just the proposed language. Some of this is really kind of clearing up things that are old, but essentially, actually, this section is mostly just cleaning up changes with, you know, it's no longer the highway department and codes compliance and utility director. So that language change is really the cleaning up to be consistent with the way the names are right now. Then this was also cleaning up because the ordinance talks about submitting checks, and we actually allow various types of ways to pay for your plat approval. And again, this was the same thing, just pay a fee. And the idea here was to leave it revenue neutral. Right now, you, when we do a preliminary plat, it's $100 plus $10 per new lot, and then the final plat is only $100. So the idea would be to have that fee kind of extended towards the, to the final plat if no preliminary plan is submitted. But again, this is what went to the planning commission, but it's up to the board to make the decision if they want to allow the costs to stay the same or just change it to be revenue neutral. So this is really kind of the meat of the change, where we pretty much say that a preliminary plan is not required for subdivisions with less than 50 lots. And so the process would be the same as it is now for any subdivisions more than 50 lots or more, but it would be voluntary if you wanted to submit a preliminary plat for any major subdivision with fewer than 50 lots, 50 lots or fewer. So this went to the planning commission. Nobody spoke at the public hearing, and it was recommended to go to the board for approval with a seven to zero vote. So that's the end of my presentation, and I can entertain any questions now or after the public hearing.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll now open the floor for public comments. Are there individuals that would like to speak to this? I do not see anyone coming to the podium, so we'll close this public hearing and we'll open the floor for the board to ask any questions, comments, discussion. Mr. Meyer?
Ms. Duzi Ortiz, could you walk through the revenue neutral calculation again? I got lost on that.
So essentially, right now, we get $100 fee for a major subdivision plus $10 per lot. If no preliminary subdivision was submitted, we would just get $100 fee at the end for the final plat, and the development plan would probably take more time in terms of where we would spend the time to review all the requirements of the subdivision ordinance that don't get reviewed at the time of the preliminary plat. So the idea was that it would be deferred, if no preliminary plat was submitted, it would be deferred till, to the final plat. There would be a loss of revenue in general because we're not recouping the entire fee in terms of the $10 per lot. It's really recouping the $100 that we would get as part of the preliminary.
So what's the total amount of money we're typically talking about in a year?
Not much at all. We, the subdivision fees are pretty low, and there haven't been a lot of subdivisions, so it's not much money at all. So again, it's a board decision. If you just want to keep the fees the way they are, then it would just be, only if you submitted a preliminary plat, would you have to pay that additional fee, and then it's $100 for a final plat.
Gentlemen, any other questions? Mr. Weinberger?
I have a statement. Help me out here, Ann. I'll try to explain it, so she's real detailed, but basically what this does, and I've been through this, when you, when you bring your site plans in, and what this is saying is anything under 50 lots, if you want to roll the dice and just submit one plat at the end, you can do that, but what this, is that correct, Ann?
Well, you still have your development plan, so you'd still have the erosion and sediment control.
Right, but I'm talking about your main plat. And what this does, what they're asking is that we should probably, and I would if I were doing this, to do a preliminary plat so that they can look at it, because they will say, you know, it needs this, it needs this, it needs this, it needs this. And then you have a chance to adjust it before you bring it to a final plat. If you submit the final plat and it's not correct, what happens?
Well, it's mainly the engineering work, because the preliminary plan is kind of drawn up, you know, you work out all the details, and then you do your engineering work, and the final plat is, the preliminary plat kind of says how you meet the ordinance and what additional things may be required, and then you do your engineering based on that. So that's where the cost comes in of how much, you know, you're designing roads, you're designing drainage basins, you're getting your health department permits, and based on your health department permits, you may not be able to fit things, and then you adjust all that on your final plat. So the preliminary plat kind of gives you a heads up of any ordinances or issues that you might have to deal with before you spend the money on the engineering. So.
Thank you, Mr. Weinberger, for that information. So gentlemen, any other questions, comments, discussion? Okay, Mr. Meyer? That's true. No one came.
Nobody spoke.
I didn't notice.
Okay, so.
So my thought on, so my thought on this is, this is, you know, if the developer wants to assume the risk of no preliminary plat, I'd say lead that to the developer. I think this is a sound ordinance change, although I would tend to favor keeping the current fee structure. I don't think we need to be digging for those few extra nickels.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. Seeing no other hands going up, we have an ordinance that's on the floor for adoption. Is there a motion to accept?
Motion.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, Ms. Garten, one more, some discussion.
So if you want to keep the fees where they're at, do we not need to have a motion to support that prior to voting on this motion?
Either way, but you now have a motion and a second on.
Okay.
So you might vote that down, or you move to amend.
You can.
When do I move to amend, Mr. Turner?
A motion to amend would be in order now.
I'd like to move to amend the ordinance to retain the current fee structure as opposed to the proposed fee structure.
Okay, there's a second. Okay.
So, Mr. Chair, what you would do is you would vote on Mr. Meyer's motion, and then if it passes, you would then vote on the modified amend motion.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Wilmot. Okay, so is there any further discussion on the amendment? Okay, seeing none, Ms. Garten, poll the board regarding the amendment.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Weinberger?
Yes.
Mr. Bazani?
Yes.
Mr. Crisco?
Yes.
Mr. Orth?
Yes.
Motion to amend passes seven to zero.
I vote on the main motion as amended. Is there any further discussion on that? Seeing none, Ms. Garten, poll the board.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Weinberger?
Yes.
Mr. Bazani?
Yes.
Mr. Crisco?
Yes.
Mr. Orth?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay, last public hearing. To consider an ordinance to amend Chapter 15 dot 5, Site Plans, Section 15 dot 5 dash 1.7, general requirements, regulations, restrictions. Mr. Curry.
Thank you. 1984, the board at that time adopted the site plan ordinance and the Section 15 point 5 dash 1 point 7, which discusses certain requirements that each developer who submits a site plan must meet. One of those requirements, subsection I, is regarding landscape requirements in green area. It occurs to me after your HCOD, HCDD discussions as of, that you recently approved, that these requirements in the site plan ordinance are in addition to or more onerous than those that are now included in the HCDD. And I don't know that the board or the public knows that these are in place, and it seemed to me that you would want to bring these in line with what you just did in adopting the HCDD. So in order to do that, you would simply delete section I in its entirety of 155 1.7. And if you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, we'll open up the public hearing for this particular issue. Are there individuals that would like to speak to this? Please come forth.
Once again, Don Mitchell, York District. It's a rare occasion, but I would like to commend the county employees, specifically Mr. Curry, for coming up with this, which is an obvious thing to do. I think it deserves your support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other individuals that would like to speak to this? I see no one else coming to the podium, so I'll close this public hearing and I'll open the floor to the board for questions and comments or discussion.
The ordinance, amended ordinance language is on 225 of your packet, and motion is needed to that effect if you are moved.
Okay, we have the motion, and it's been seconded. Is there further discussion? Mr. Weinberger?
I just have a question. Mr. Curry, you said something about section I or something like that. Do we need to address that, or is that?
That is included in your, your package is the adjusted version of this ordinance with section I struck through.
And by-passionists will adjust it.
That is correct.
That's it. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Bazani?
Thank you, Mr. Curry, for bringing this to our attention.
In a full disclosure, Ann made me aware of this a long time ago, and so as your discussions on HCDD developed, we had to make sure that we brought everything else in line.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion, Mr. Weinberger?
I might make a motion to accept this.
We already have.
We already have. That's why I said further discussion. It's, I know. Okay, I see no further discussion. Ms. Garten, poll the board.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Weinberger?
Yes.
Mr. Bazani?
Yes.
Mr. Crisco?
Yes.
Mr. Orth?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Seven to zero, motion passed.
Okay, this closes the public hearing, and we're going to take a brief recess. We'll be back in five to 10 minutes. The items, we're going to shift one little item quickly. First, we're going to do, uh, item D and then item C. So, um, item D is appropriations of tourism reserve funds by Ms. Carol Steele, Director of Parks and Recreation and Tourism.
Good evening. Thank you for accommodating that, uh, scheduled shift. Tonight, I'm here to ask for an appropriation from the reserve fund, that's the tourism reserve fund, for a special project. And I thought it would be good to kind of explain a little bit about what we do and maybe make you all more familiar and the audience at home familiar. Because it's a real success story and something we're very proud of. Tourism dollars at work. And the plan to, uh, to restore or at least rehabilitate and interpret our Court Circle buildings was adopted by the Board of Supervisors in two thousand and one. And part of that adoption was based on plans that had been done from the nineteen seventy-six bicentennial when they were doing, uh, digs and things around, um, the county. And information was put forward of what should and could happen. And that plan was originally brought to you by, as a joint effort from the Historical Committee and the Tourism Initiative. So, we've had, um, significant improvements since two thousand and one, and hopefully many more to come. First of all, where do we get the money? We have a four percent lodging or transient occupancy tax, and that is what we use for our tourism operations. That means our county staff, our, you know, paper supplies, our equipment, and all the different things like that. Any excess revenues that we have that are over the amount of money that it takes to run the program has been put in a special projects reserve fund. And if we want to use that fund, we come to the board and ask for it, which is what we're doing tonight. The first project that we did was the restoration or, excuse me, rehabilitation, and that's a technical word. I like to say restoration, but if we were really in the business of it, historians would say we are not restoring them to the, to the way the building exactly was, so it's a rehab project. The first one was for the Clayton Building. And at the time, the roof on it was leaking badly, and we thought we were going to have some real structural problems, and we were able to replace the roof. And then we took away some of the fixtures that, um, kind of harmed the appearance of a historical building where you've got a window unit, um, stuck out the window when cars are driving by, and it's like, wow, that's an eighteen twenty-three building, and that air conditioner sure is old. Other kinds of utility features. So, we were able to remove those. And then inside, we had an asbestos ceiling, and we spent a little bit of money and got rid of that. And we were able to hide the, the heaters. We use a geothermal unit. It's wonderful. Um, it's green and it, and you can hide it as well. So, there, the vents are in discreet locations. We stabilized the firebox as well that was in really bad shape and just all kinds of litter falling out. And then we discovered, sometimes we don't know what we have in these buildings because they've been reused so often, and so we had no idea that there was an original slate floor in there. And it was in pretty bad shape. Someday, we might be able to restore it, but to keep it, um, in its present state, we covered it back up, and then we used, uh, an identical kind of period appropriate floor, I should say, that was the brick floor. And so, that's all covered and put in sand, and, and that original floor is still under there and protected. And then we went in with the furnishings and trying to make it period appropriate. And also putting some exhibits, and in this case, to John Clayton and the work that he did. We moved over to the debtor's prison, and again, another discovery, we had interior walls and we're ripping off that, and we find the original oak boards that we did not know were there. And, uh, we were able to test the nailheads, and we changed the date on that building. We thought it was older than it really was, and I mentioned later on dendrochronology, and we did dendrochronology on three of our buildings, including this building, and verified the ages of those buildings. That, we thought it was eighteen ten, and I believe it's eighteen twenty-four. Uh, so, we, again, worked on the fireplace. It was in pretty rough shape. And this picture doesn't, um, show justice to the floor. It's not an original floor, but it's a very old one. And we're still, this is a work in progress. You can still, uh, see we have some utility things that are attached to the building. And, and I'm going to maybe put a teaser out there and say that little square hole over there that you can see in the corner of the room, if you want to know the full story about what we found out about the building, come during the day, and one of the docents, sir, I'll tell you the, the story on that. But, uh, a unique feature of our debtor's prison. Then we started on the Roan Building across the way, and that was after the museum opened up over the Body Todd Hotel, and we were through with our three-fiftieth celebration, and we were able to move our visitor's center from the Clayton Building to the Roan Building and increase our size. The bottom right picture shows, uh, the tile that we found. Again, it wasn't specked, uh, we had the, the, the building specs were a part of the board packet, and so we knew that it was a poured floor. But about four or five years, sometime shortly after the building opened, they put this tile down. We didn't know it was there, and unfortunately, we couldn't save it, but we were able to see it and measure it and to put a replica floor in. In the minutes, we did read that there was this beautiful, um, corrugated steel ceiling, and you can see the work in progress and exposing on what was there. And, um, we had...
That's original?
Yes, yes, it is.
I'm sorry.
No, it's great, and I could talk for hours. I won't, but I could talk for hours. This is one of my favorite subjects. Um, the steps there are the replacement steps. They were crumbling. We'd had, uh, some near misses there too many times, and then even our docents afterwards asked for a railing to be put up, and so that showed an improvement. Uh, we worked with a quarry outside of Richmond to get those steps in. And we decided we wanted people to see that ceiling, and we hang our banners from there. We have a, a period-looking light. And, uh, our visitor's center, you can see the tile, replica tile in the rooms there. And we have great exhibits. We have an exhibit that was help-funded by donations for the Werwick Comico site, and also Battle of the Hook, and we've got Civil War and, um, and there's, uh, archaeology there that EBB helped fund too. And our gift shop, so it's very nice, very small. Uh, other projects that we have funded, uh, we've put in alarm systems in this building and our museum across the street and our, our other buildings, both, um, entry alarms as well as smoke alarms. It's a constant project that we're having to evaluate the brick. Uh, the mortar disintegrates. We have, and that's what repointing is, is going in and filling in with new mortar. And so, we evaluate where they're falling. We have a monitor that's right above the door here that's a little thing that, um, looks to see to make sure that the, the building's not falling over. We had one question about one of our chimneys, and we had that evaluated. We put up the Welcome to Gloucester signs. We've done the period furnishings, the dendrochronology. Um, that was done from a team from Oxford that happened to be over at Colonial Williamsburg, and we were able to, to kind of ride their contract. Exhibits like the one out front with the Civil War trails. And then recently, we purchased, purchased a canoe and kayak launch that's at Beaver Dam Park, and it's being installed right now, and that is a handicap-accessible, um, new launch system. All of these things and more were done with the transient occupancy tax. I think we're very good stewards of the money. We've got a lot of really exciting projects and, uh, just wanting to keep it, keep it going. So, what's next? Isn't that a pretty picture? Um, that is of the Annex Next Door, which is our most modern building in the nineteen fifties, now considered historic. Um, we would like, as it's been scheduled that we would move the visitor's center over there, we thought it was going to be more years in the future, but with all of the domino moves that occurred in the last year, it's allowing us to go over there. So, what we would like to do, um, is put an ADA, uh, accessible ramp onto that, um, building. It's the, it's lower to the ground. It's much easier to do than the other buildings. And right now, visitors are limited in how they can get into our visitor's center. There are two restrooms in there, very tight little quarters, and we'll, um, make one universal restroom that would be compliant. We have a lot of heat and ventilation, air conditioning work we need to do, and we had some temporary walls that were put up during, um, different office uses, and we'd like to take them down. And then the upstairs is where we would locate our tourism coordinator, our, and our two part-time employees, the festival coordinator and our part-time tourism assistant. And that helps in that if a docent calls in sick, which has been happening, uh, unfortunately a little bit, um, more, um, recently, and so we've had our, our visitor's center has had to be closed. And if Hilton's upstairs working, he can just kind of run down the stairs and keep the shop open and not have to worry about being across the street and continue his, his work too. When I was over yesterday taking pictures, we had like six different, uh, people that came through, and I was trying to take pictures and, and show them around because we didn't have a docent. Uh, another project that we would like to do with this appropriation is go back into the Roan Building once it's vacated and rework. Uh, that is plaster that is falling apart. Um, we've got a mess on our hands that we would like to, to clean up, and it'll be much easier to do once the building is empty or near empty. We'll keep exhibits in there and then take it back so that the front room will look more like a clerk's office from the turn of the century. And then the next project, one that I've been wanting to, to get involved with for years, is the restoration of the old jail or rehabilitation of the old jail. Uh, when we put in the geothermal well into the Roan Building, which was our second well, we had to have a crane come in and lift the digging device up over the wall because we couldn't get in anymore, and it was a pretty large undertaking. So, we went ahead and pre-drilled the will, the wells for the jail so that we wouldn't have to do that again. And they've been capped, and they've just been sitting there. And we'd like to go ahead and get that done and, um, help that building too. It's got some moisture issues, and, and having a new system in there will, will be a, a big help. We'd like to put in one, two, three, or four cells so people can see what a jail looked like back then. And again, the period furnishings, and then the restroom improvements. That is an old picture, and if you notice, um, you can see the two signs on the side of the building and the matching two, uh, wings. And a lot of people don't know it. I worked here for many years before I knew it because we had male and female bathrooms on this end of the building, and on the other end, it was closed and used for storage. And I did not realize that that was the original leftover from when we had four restrooms back during the times of segregation. And what we did during the first rehab of those bathrooms is we knocked the walls down and made them universal compliant, so we have male on one wing and female on the other. And we'd like to dress them up a little bit. You've probably noticed they're, they're not the nicest bathrooms, and, um, it would be good to put a little bit more money in, some TLC into them. And then again, we'll, more exhibits and things. We've got some, some great work that we can do. Uh, I, I think Gloucester's historic buildings, both the Court Circle and the Body Todd Hotel or the Museum of History are, they're just treasures for both our residents and our tourists. So, what I'm asking for tonight is an appropriation of seventy-five thousand dollars of the two-hundred-and-seventy-four-thousand that we have in the reserve, and we would be working through contracts. We have one existing one with an architectural firm, and we would be putting the other things out to bid and following all of the procurement pro, um, processes. And, um, that leaves us enough money with two-hundred-and-seventy-four-thousand that keeps us a nest egg if we run into some downturn, downtimes, uh, with our budget, as well as if we want to move forward with the appropriation for Woodville or other projects. So, it's not totally wiping out the kitty. I'll be glad to answer any questions that you have, and, uh, also be glad to show you around those buildings so you can see them firsthand.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Steele. Questions, comments from the board? Mr. Weinberger.
Uh, Ms. Steele, how far along do you think you'll get with seventy-five thousand? Is it this, uh, on page eighty-three, the, are those the things that you intend to do with that?
Yes. I, I think we will get pretty far with the exception maybe of some of the furnishings. I think the, the heating and air work, the wall work, we're going to utilize our Buildings and Grounds Department for some of that. Um, some of it's above what they can do, but other things they can. So, I, I think between what we're proposing as well as the fiscal year, that's as much as we'd be able to do.
Now, with, with the, uh, all the period work you're doing, why couldn't we just put a couple of one-holders in or something like that?
Come, come back to that debtor's prison story, and I'll, I'll tell you about that.
Mr. Bazani.
Um, Ms. Steele, how did you, how did you come up with the seventy-five thousand? Did you get, did you get vendor quotes and, you know, you're saying, okay, this totals up with, in addition to what the county can do and vendor quotes, this'll total up to about seventy-five thousand? Is that how you developed it?
We have one vendor quote from an architectural firm that is for over sixty thousand, but it is for more work than we need to have done because we want to sub out, um, some of that work away from that. Um, architectural firm, I think if we go local with the heating and cooling, which is what we did before, we're going to be able to beat out their price. And also by having Buildings and Grounds come in and do some of the work that was in part of that sixty thousand. So, I kind of used that as my starting point, and then looked at what I could subtract from there, and then use that money, the fifteen extra approximately, plus the money we would save. And, and it's, it's a ballpark. I mean, I would expect that I'll be coming back, you know, and telling you where we are, and maybe it'll be in May, and asking for what we will want to carry over until next year.
And I'm assuming we'll be working with Mr. Lindsay with our bids?
Absolutely, yes.
And we know the capabilities of Mr. Lindsay in terms of coming up with, uh, good prices for projects. Uh, Mr. Meyer.
Okay, uh, from a statutory or, uh, resolutions of the board, state that tourism dollars can be used for what kinds of things?
The, there's, um, a requirement that's by the state that says that one-half, and in our case, two percent, must be used for tourism promotions, tourism efforts. It's not like defining exactly what, so enhancing a tourist attraction or marketing, things like that, the welcome signs, all those fall into that category of accepted...
So, you, so you have a great deal of latitude as to what constitutes tourism?
Yes.
Right, now, if this seventy-five thousand dollars was not appropriate for this, what would you use seventy-five thousand dollars for?
There's, we can continue to come up with, with wish lists, um, to deal with marketing and other efforts, but to me, this is, I, I wouldn't, we, we've been holding on to this money for a while. It's taken us a while to get up to that two-hundred-and-seventy-plus because we take projects very seriously of what we can afford to do and, and what can fit into the timeframe and what's smart. So, I don't have anything that I would just jump right on and want to go spend money on. Um, we've talked about, and it's part of our operating budget, our sort of operating capital is looking at a new mountain biking trail asset. As we have a trail at Beaver Dam, and if we improve it, that's about nine thousand. I mean, it's not a lot of money. So, there's different things here and there that are small.
Just have a general comment. I think, I think this is, I, I support what you're doing. And, uh, and I think we should probably support this tonight, but, uh, it goes back to something I don't think, think we're doing correctly on our funding. If you remember the report from the Capital Improvements, uh, panel, committee, board, advisory. But, uh, to take the maintenance, repair and maintenance funds out of the capital fund and, and use operations money to pay for the repair and maintenance of those buildings, you know, and I think this is something that we still have the opportunity to try to embed in next year's budget. And to me, these kinds of improvements need to be done. I think they're core to the character of this county and, and what we think of this county. But I think they're also things that rightfully should be done out of the operating funds of the, the county as opposed to your tourism dollars. I know we don't have that option tonight, but, uh, going forward, I just think we need to continue to revisit setting aside sums of money, the sums of money necessary to maintain county facilities, and these are among them.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. Any other comments, questions from the board? You know, certainly, I think we all realize the treasure this is for the county and, um, you know, the people that come here to see these facilities. Do we know, are the people that come here, do they, um, use their restaurants? Do we ever keep track of other expenditures that people...
Yes, I mean, we work closely with the Main Street Association, and we do track the numbers that come in, the lo, you know, the locations that they're coming from everywhere Gloucester England, all over the, the states. Um, so, we do track that, and we work with them. I, I, I should have mentioned, uh, the banners that we've done on Main Street. We've done that out of our general operating budget, but that's another thing where we've supported Main Street's efforts to get people out to restaurants. And then now with the visitor's center that we have at Whitley's Peanuts, we're doing things at the southern end of the county as well.
Okay, gentlemen, um, any issues with, uh...
I do.
Oh, Mr. Hudson.
Ms. Steele, um, I know you put the sign up down at Gloucester Point, right there, that brick sign.
No, sir. That is a Chamber of Commerce sign.
Okay.
The wooden ones are the ones that the picture are like ours, and because they had that one, we did not put one down there.
Okay. Wait, is it possible that you could get with the different groups that are doing the Wine
Festival, the Guinea Jubilee, and everything that seems to be coming up right now and has happened? Would it be possible to make a similar stand that everybody could use, so you don't have a whole bunch of signs at that one spot, and get everybody to agree that interchange them when they come about? Is that just something you could look at with the different groups and work on it for me?
I think Hilton did a great job with the banners we have here. And there are banners that are down there, and I'll talk to the Chambers employee, their executive director tomorrow, and see about putting something that would be a static and just change it out.
Thanks.
I think we can definitely do that.
Okay, gentlemen. Any other comments, questions? Then we have a resolution on the fourth. Do we have a motion to accept?
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, Ms. Garten, pull the board.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Ohr?
Yes.
Mr. Crisco?
Yes.
Mr. Bizani?
Yes.
Mr. Weinberger?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Now we'll go back to item C, decision on additional appropriations for fiscal year 2015. And Scott, my computer screen's locked up, and I do not know what, I can't get anything.
I got here.
Yeah. Yeah. I touched something.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't see on his.
I feel like we're having a little side conversation over here, so. The question was asked, could the board use some of its fund balance to do some of the restoration work in these buildings? And the answer is, yes, you could. If you decided you wanted to use fund balance, you could set it aside for renovations and improvements or rehabilitations, whatever the correct word is, for the Courthouse Circle buildings. So yes, you could do that.
All right. This is a request to bring forward, for an appropriation, to bring forward funding for projects and other initiatives that were begun in fiscal year 14, not completed by June 30th, and continue on to FY, or fiscal year 15. I'm going to briefly discuss each one of them. I am going to, according to the memo that you may have received, I am going to switch it around a little bit, because I want to talk about county office space a little bit more in detail. So I'll do that at the end. The first one is the Capital Fund School Vehicle Replacement Fund. Basically, as the memo says, there was $11,208 in unspent monies at the end of the previous fiscal year, and the school's now asking for that money to be carried forward into 2015 to be combined with the fiscal year 15 appropriation of $163,000. The intent is that these amounts will be used to purchase two school buses. So again, that's $11,208. In addition, we have, under the Capital Fund, we have repair of county buildings. In 2014, there was appropriation of $77,000 from the excess fund balance, excuse me, to upgrade the county's HVAC automation system. As of June 30th, the work totaled about $71,400, but we had not, had not been invoiced for that work at that time. So we're asking for a carryover appropriation in the Capital Fund of that $71,400 to be able to finish that work out. The third one is Capital Fund Communication Systems. Basically, what this will do is finish the Emergency Operations Center build-out. That's obviously been a long, ongoing project, starting with the Emergency Communications Center on the upper level. This is the lower level. Again, as of June 30th, there was an outstanding balance, if you will, of almost $36,000 to bring forward. While we have moved in, we do have a CO to occupy that space. There are still some little few outstanding issues with both the contractor and the consultant on that job. I do want to note that when this is completed, there was, actually came in another budget overall, big picture, of over $56,000. So that's, that will be, that part of it's again, 35, almost $36,000 that we're asking for to finish out. And that's all been previously encumbered, all SPOs issued, all that type of thing. The last one that I wanted to talk to a little bit in detail about, just because it's been a lot going on with it, and I think you all have a general idea of what all's been going on, but is, just want to talk about it for a second, is the office space. With the office space money that was appropriated in FY 14, which started out as $100,000, then a little over $18,000 to pay off the parking lot improvements that were done the previous year. And then in the beginning of this year, we asked for another appropriation of $160,000 to start the Building Two renovations. At this point, the Building Two renovations are complete, generally speaking. Couple of little last-minute items we're still waiting to get resolved. We have, with everything, with HVAC replacement, carpet painting renovation, fire alarm system, we've spent about $148,000. That's less than the $160,000 we anticipated. So with a little bit of extra money, we went ahead and paid for some of the people to move. Moving company actually moved staff. That was a little bit over $8,600 total, moving all 11 departments and offices. That includes the ones out of Building Three over to Building Two, some internal moves from Building One to Building Two, from Bodytote Elementary School to Building One. So a little bit of everything going on there. But we were successful. We committed to you all that we would have everybody out of Building Three by June 30th, and we did, which basically saves us a monthly lease that we were paying amount of 24, almost $2,400. So that's a savings that we now, the county now has. Let's see. Before I leave the Building Two expenses, I do want to make a comment, and I guess as they say in the world, a shout-out to our Building and Grounds folks. They did an excellent job. For those of you who have or have not been over there, they built all the counters, they built all the walls that needed to be modified. It's just amazing the skill set that those guys have, and I think we should be proud in county to have workers that are that good. Let's see. The other work that we did under the county office space was the law enforcement roof, law enforcement building roof system replacement, which we originally had thought might be about $75,000. Again, going out for competitive bid, the low bid came in at $55,650, although we did have bids all the way up to $80,000. So we saved a little money there, too, which allowed us to then start on some of the renovations that needed to be done on Building One. Again, we needed to move community education out of Bodytote, so that that space could revert back to the school system. So while the space was empty in Building One, we went ahead and painted the walls and just did some general cleanup, because it's better to do it when it's empty. And then, as you all are, I'm sure, aware, recently, the Central Absentee Precinct had to be, was relocated from here into Building One. We needed to do some modifications to that space to accommodate the Central Absentee Precinct. So what we're really asking for tonight is, under the county office item, is to try to bring forward a total of $153,000. This will pay for the law enforcement roof, because again, even though the work started before June 30th, we were not invoiced until, we were not invoiced and we did not pay the invoice until we had all the final warranties, all the final inspections and everything. So that, nothing happened there. So that's a big chunk, that's over $57,000. Some of the other additional expenses that occurred for the Building Two, that again, didn't get posted until after June 30th. Some of the Building One renovations, again, as I said before, for the Central Absentee Precinct. And then we're also asking for what we're referring to as additional renovations to Building One, and the amount of approximately $67,000. Now, $27,000 of that is money that was previously appropriated in FY 14 from the excess fund balance, but we are asking for an additional $40,000. What this will basically do, now that we have moved people out of Building One, we have an opportunity to do some efficiency improvements, some security improvements, things of that nature. We'll be looking at primarily the Departments of Finance and Human Resources, which I believe are two of our more critical departments as far as confidentiality and security are concerned. You know, we certainly don't want, want to be able to lock those places up and make sure they're secure. There's a lot of personnel issues and things involved. So we're basically asking tonight, again, to come to you all to, for a resolution for office space for $153,335. Again, that's all come from the excess fund balance and the general fund. So there's no additional debt service. Do you have any questions?
How much is this as carryover, that we've already appropriated? So?
$113. $113.
So new monies is?
The 40.
Great.
But that's for office space. Now, the other ones, all were carried. Everything, the only thing that's different is the office space.
Okay, gentlemen. Any questions for Mr. Lewis?
I know that was kind of quick, but.
Mr. Meyer.
I have a process objection or complaint here, in that what we're doing is we're taking the carryover of previously appropriated monies, and then we're having a discussion where we put in another $40,000 of new appropriations. And to me, a new appropriation needs to be a separate discussion, needs to be done in more detail than the things that we already talked about and decided in the previous year.
Okay.
So it's not that I'm against the $40,000. I'm not in favor of spending that $40,000 in this discussion, because you haven't come to us with a more detailed outline of what we're going to do with that $40,000.
Okay.
So I think it's out of sequence.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments? How do you want to deal with this? We have the resolution.
Yeah, actually, talks about all of it.
So how do we want to approach this? Do we have a suggestion that, Mr. Meyer, do you want to remove that $40,000 and get more details and allow the other projects to move forward with the carryover funds that were appropriated? Mr. Hudson.
How will the $40,000, lack of getting $40,000 affect what you're doing?
It will defer or put off some of the work that we were hoping to do in Building One.
Such as?
Renovations to both the Finance Department, the Human Resources Department. Generally, right now, say, for example, in the Human Resources Department, there is one office where you actually have to walk through one person's office to get to another person's office, where our HR analyst doesn't have a door. And I know these probably sound trivial to a lot of folks, but when you're talking people's personnel issues, possible complaints, Family Medical Leave Act issues, again, you're talking about confidentiality and privacy issues that we really need to address, and little surprise, we've never had to address it before. So we just thought, while we were in this mindset of our staff is ready to move to the next step, again, they're completed with Building Two, they'll be available this winter, because once it's winter, they're more, they're more able to come inside and work some of the things outside they can't do. So we're just, we're just trying to keep the momentum going, if you will.
Garten.
I don't know how many of you have been in Building One and kind of roamed around since we have relocated some folks, but we are moving some office spaces around, which require us to take down some walls and put up some walls, which means the carpeting no longer works, because you have the strip with no carpeting. We are eliminating a conference room in one place and moving it to a different place, because we need that space for something else. So there's, because we moved some of the folks out of Building One to Building Two, and some of the folks from Bodytote into Building One, the way the offices are configured is completely different. I think my office, well, actually, my office is impacted, too, because HR is coming over and taking part of that conference room that's next to my office, and my conference room is moving down the hall. So there's a lot of pieces and parts, a lot of walls going up, coming down. The carpet is all messed up, so while nobody's in those spaces, we're trying to do all that at one time. So if we don't have the $40,000, he can only go so far, and then you'd be moving people into those spaces without that work being done, which I think in some cases, you almost can't do, because you can't leave carpeting, for example, with a strip where there isn't any, because people trip on it. So there are some issues that are just related to moving all those offices around.
Mr. Weinberger. Do I understand correctly that we have the, the 113 has already been appropriated from last year, and we're looking to talk about 40 more? Well, why don't we, and this is just a suggestion, why don't we approve the 113 and get him to come back to us at the next meeting or whatever, and talk about the 40? Then we can go from one rate to the other. They're not going to get all the work done before we have another meeting, are you?
Oh, yeah, we could.
You're not English, bro. I mean, I agree with you, but I think they've, I mean, they've told us, and I think when they come back, they'll just rehash what they've done and just give us the same song and dance of why they need the $40,000, what they've just told us. And I agree with Mr. Meyer that this is a new appropriation, but this is, we're looking at doing new appropriations all the time. And I think if we just look at that, since there's no additional funds other than the $40,000, which would be for that, I think we need to go ahead and add that to it.
And we could always blame the former Finance Director, if you will, since she retired on me, because she should be here.
Gentlemen, I see, Mr. Meyer, I see your hand going up here.
And my point's going to be, for $40,000 of new appropriations, I would expect to see written justification, as opposed to what I can remember or think of about the cut carpets, pulling it out of your hip.
Bizani.
And I would agree with that premise as well.
Could you do this by our next meeting in October?
Oh, sure. Absolutely. I mean, I can, I can take what we've discussed here, put it in a form and show you, because, you know, a lot of what this amount is based on is what it costs us to do the work in Building Two. And so I can, based on that size and square footage versus what we're doing in Building One, and the magnitude and things of that nature, I can certainly get something to you for that, if that's your preference.
Okay, Mr. Bizani.
And when you come back with another request for the additional appropriation, are you going to give us how you derive that? Did you get vendor quotes, things like that, as opposed to just saying, I need $40,000, please give it to me?
Well, again, I didn't get vendor quotes, but what I did is, based on what we did in Building Two, and what it cost us there versus the size of Building One, and did a ratio, if you will, of the cost. I did break it down in that term.
Mr. Crisco.
Yeah, aren't you looking at possibly using a lot of your Building and Grounds guys to do most of this work? So there's not going to be a whole lot of vendor quotes coming in on any of this project, correct?
No. The only one would be if any carpets replaced. We may, depending on schedule and timing, we might hire somebody to do the painting we did in Building Two, because that was time-sensitive, but we certainly have guys on staff who could do that if we choose to go that route. Most of the money for them is not their time, but it's for the supplies and the materials that they have to purchase to do the work. And some of the unknowns, when you get into these buildings that have been renovated so many times, is you take, you take a ceiling tile out, and all of a sudden, where you think something was going to be, isn't there, and you have to just make adjustments on the spot, may have to go back and buy some additional material and supplies. But, no, I certainly understand, and I always try to make sure it's based on something, you know? If not a vendor quote, at least, again, the percentage of what it costs us to do Building Two. Building One's a much smaller space. We're not going to have, well, we'll have some moving within Building One. We're not moving anybody out of and into. There's no furniture requirements, things of that nature, so.
I think if we step back, you know, a year ago, when Mr. Curry came and presented us with the request, I think we should be very impressed by how much has been done with how little money, and they've done a phenomenal job.
Absolutely.
At keeping costs very, very low for renovating a big building. So I think you should be commended for that. But would you want to approve the process and just approve this, and then have them come back in two weeks, just to have those numbers in a little more detail?
I think for the purpose of the resolution, what I'd like to is make a motion that the resolution be approved for the carryover funding, but not include the $40,000 in new money.
Okay, is that a motion? Is there a second?
Second, second.
Okay. Is there further discussion? Mr. James.
I've been sitting here listening to all of this, and I know that the policy is that any leftover budget money from any department goes back, should go back into the general fund. back into the general fund. And every year, we're faced with this same situation. The school board winds up with a, this much money left over at the end of the year, and they invariably come to us and ask for that money for other projects. And if, if they're that far off on the budgeting, uh, they need to correct that a little bit because we, this money that, that you're showing now is money that was evidently budgeted for something else. If you got it left over, it was budgeted for something else.
Now, most of this is, is for county projects that were, actually, the project was awarded and the work began last fiscal year. It just wasn't completed until, um, let's say, July, August timeframe. So we're just now having to make the, uh, pay the invoice, so to speak.
Mr. Crisco.
Um, just looking here at all this information, and I know that Mr. Meyer just made a motion and I seconded it, um, but I guess what we, the, the true value that we need to be looking at would be two thirty-one, seven fifty-three as part of the motion, not the one thirteen, correct? That's just a portion of it?
Right.
But the total, the total in the resolution would change to two thirty-one, seven fifty-three because the forty would come out on the left and the one fifty-three, three thirty-five on the right would become one thirteen, three thirty-five.
Right, but I'm thinking we just made the motion for the one thirteen. I think we probably should change it.
Actually, the motion was for carryover.
For carryover.
Okay.
Carryover from what? It was a carry.
Twenty fourteen.
It was the carryover from last year. We had already approved last year's budget. They just didn't have the invoices to the county in time for us to put it in the system. So it's money that we've spent last year, but we just didn't pay it last year because we didn't get the invoices in time to pay it and put it on our books for last year.
Essentially.
We didn't spend it last year. We started the project and it didn't get finished and invoiced until the new fiscal year. So you're just taking, you're just taking money left over from a project and pushing it into this.
And this is a very typical thing that happens, especially when you cut, have a cutoff of fiscal year June thirtieth, and work is, just hasn't been built.
Can't make every project magically in on June thirtieth. We wish we could.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor. Is there any further discussion regarding carryover? I see no other hands, so Ms. Garten, pull the board, please.
Mr. James.
Yes.
Mr. Hudson.
Yes.
Mr. Orth.
Yes.
Mr. Crisco.
Yes.
Mr. Bizani.
Yes.
Mr. Weinberger.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer. Seven zero.
Okay, and Mr. Lewis, we'll see you in a couple of weeks with a little more detail on that?
Absolutely.
Great, thank you very much. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Weinberger.
Um, in the new, um, voting area, when you walk into the registrar's office and you turn the light on, it cuts the light on in the conference room or that room with all, where you go in to vote?
Okay.
We need an individual light switch for in there.
Okay, let's move on. We're going to item E, decision on a superseding order by consent required by a previously approved regional memorandum of agreements to carry.
Thank you. Um, I think we all recall the lengthy discussion that led up to the vote that the board took on February twenty-second, two thousand and fourteen, uh, related to the memorandum of agreement, uh, with the other localities in Hampton Roads area who discharged HRSD, um, and HRSD, in which the localities in the region agreed to change the concept of how we were going to approach meeting the requirements of EPA and DEQ relative to sanitary sewer overflows. In that memorandum of agreement, which is included in your board packet, uh, included the, the signed final version, it's included in your board packet starting on page one eleven, um, essentially, the concept was that HRSD would take over the responsibility to manage wet weather, uh, overflows. So if it rains a whole lot and water finds its way into the sewer system, then you can overwhelm the system and therefore, um, sewage can spill out into our Chesapeake Bay, and EPA and DEQ aren't fond of that. Uh, so, um, the prior, um, arrangement, uh, through the consent order by the state was to, um, require the localities to manage wet weather, um, overflows in their, each, each locality, as well as HRSD to manage wet weather overflows for their system. Uh, and each of us have our own task to do to solve that problem. The alternate approach agreed to by all the localities and the HRSD through the MOA was to say it makes more sense for one entity, HRSD, to manage all of the wet weather overflows and make the corrections system-wide to fix that problem. And so we made that determination as a region that we wanted to do that. And, and all localities agreed, and they signed the MOAs as included in your packet. Uh, that went up to EPA, and EPA reviewed it, and they indicated beforehand that they would be agreeable to that, and they were agreeable to that. And so they modified the, their order with HRSD to be consistent with the concept of this revised approach with, that it's identified in the MOA. DEQ then reviewed the consent decree that they, consent order that they had with each, all the localities, and, uh, said, yes, we are also amenable to the revised regional approach as laid out in the MOA. And as such, the consent, uh, orders that were, uh, in place previously, which are laid out, um, in the motion that I have for you, uh, that took place, uh, let's see, September twenty-sixth, two thousand and seven, uh, between, uh, DEQ and the Hampton Roads sanitation district and the localities, that consent order requires localities to take many actions, including controlling the wet weather, uh, overflows. And so if, to, um, to come in line with the new regional approach that EPA has suggested is acceptable, the localities have agreed is preferable, DEQ now needs to modify that consent order and not hold the localities to that high standard any longer. So the replacement is a new consent order, which is included in your packet, uh, was reviewed and negotiated by each staff from each of the localities, HRSD, DEQ, multiple times, back and forth, as well as, uh, County Attorney Wilmot. Um, and it is ready for the board to consider, uh, taking action on the revised consent agenda, revised consent order. One of the items in your MOA that you agreed to, uh, foresaw the need to do this and essentially states that, um, that the locality will support the modification of the September twenty-sixth, two thousand and seven special order by consent as amended between DEQ, HRSD, and localities, consistent with the changes to the federal consent decree, which happened previously, I believe, in August. Uh, so we're now at the point where, uh, we've agreed regionally that the MOA, the revised approach as listed in the MOA makes sense. The new consent order has been negotiated by the localities and DEQ. That revised consent order requires us essentially to maintain our system in a proper and adequate manner through the use of a MOM plan, main, management, operations and maintenance plan. And so we have that plan, it's been approved by DEQ, and this new order essentially says, you must have the MOM plan, you must follow the MOM plan, and if you ever have a leak, you need to let us know very quickly. Uh, that in a nutshell is what we're asking you to consider today. Each locality in the region, just like with the MOA, must approve this. Um, and the region is attempting to have this resolved by all the localities by the end of October.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. Mr. Weinberger.
Uh, Mr. Curry, um, everybody's gotta approve this, just like they did the other thing.
That just like the MO, MOA, we would all be signatories to the same exact document.
If somebody doesn't approve, what happens then? Do we get all kicked out like they did on the other?
Inasmuch as each locality agreed in the MOA that they would modify it, um, you signified your intent to do so at that time. What I would suggest to you is that this order is much less onerous than the current order. So it's in our best interest to be under an order that is much less onerous. So we want to do that.
Okay, thank you. Um, gentlemen, further questions? I don't see any, so we have this, uh, resolutions on page eighty-five. Is there a motion to accept the, is there a second? Okay, do I see further discussion? I do not, and Ms. Garten, pull the board, please.
Mr. Hudson.
Yes.
Mr. Orth.
Yes.
Mr. Crisco.
Yes.
Mr. Bizani.
I'll be consistent with my last vote. No.
Mr. Weinberger.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Mr. James.
Yes.
Motion passes six to one.
Thank you. Okay, we are now going to move to item F, request for public hearing to consider ordinance amending chapter three, animal welfare and control. Mr. Wilmot.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Periodically, um, with my vast staff, we will review each chapter of the county code.
Vast staff?
My vast staff. Um, uh, page one thirty-six, you have, uh, the results of one of these periodic reviews, and this one happens to involve chapter three of the county code, which is animal welfare, um, animal welfare and control. I think the last comprehensive review of this chapter occurred in oh-nine or ten, uh, and sought to ensure that it was consistent with statutory regulations, requirements. Most of these modifications or suggested modifications are relatively minor in nature. For example, uh, the proposed modifications would remove the definition of animal shelter and pound because those have been removed from the state code sections, and you replace, replace them with terms such as private animal shelter and public animal shelter. And you would make those definitions consistent with the state law definitions. Uh, another example is a definition of serious injury. In the definition of vicious dog, it's a dog that has either killed a person or has inflicted a serious injury to a person. This definition of serious injury would track the language from the state code definition, so our ordinance would be entirely consistent with the state code definitions. Uh, page one forty-two, uh, you'd amend your section three dash fifteen point two, which deals with the abandonment of animals, to track precisely the language contained in the state enabling legislation, which outlaws the abandoning or dumping of any animal, uh, and makes it a class-three misdemeanor, which is punishable by a fine of up to five hundred dollars. Uh, also in section three dash thirty-one, some terms would be added, definitions for the term hearing dog, mobility impaired person, otherwise disabled person and service dogs. They would be borrowed from the state statutory definitions of those terms. A suggested addition to section three dash thirty-eight, dangerous and vicious dogs, would track the state enabling legislation, which allows a court to order the owner of any, a dog found to be a dangerous dog, to pay for the expenses incurred in caring and providing for such dangerous dog from the time the animal is picked up until the time the animal is disposed of or returned to the owner. Court's already doing that because they're allowed to do that, but this makes it clear in our local ordinance that the court has that authority. That's most of the suggested revisions. I heard Mr. Bizani's comment about feral cats. I am not sure off the top of my head, although I've been researching it since he brought it up, in anticipation of these suggested amendments to your animal control and welfare ordinance. I'm not sure the extent of the county's ability to regulate feral cats, and I'm not sure exactly what direction you want to go in that regard. Ideally, I would recommend that if you're going through a comprehensive review of chapter three dealing with animals, that we do it all at once. Um, and I'm kind of sorry that we didn't do the Canton leash law, but that was kind of putting the cart before the horse, so.
If I may comment, the, these, these cats are living in an abandoned home. A person is driving a mile from their home and feeding these cats and then leaving them. So these cats should be treated just like a, a, a dog. They shouldn't be, they shouldn't be loose, they're not neutered, they're not spayed. Uh, if, if there's an incident where one of these cats bites or scratches someone and it's rabid, then, then there's gonna be consequences to all that.
And I understand that.
And I think they should be controlled just like a dog, you know, spayed, neutered, and have shots. And control, they should be controlled as far as not keeping that, those cats from defecating on this woman's property, urinating on her property, inside her cars, having kittens inside her cars, and essentially ruining her property. She has to go out every day and clean the feces off of her porch.
Right, and I'm not, and I'm certainly not, um, belittling the, the severity of the situation. The cats aren't gonna listen to us. So what we would be left with is, is punishing the person who feeds the cats. And I'm not sure it's lawful for Gloucester County to prohibit someone from feeding a feral cat. Unfortunately, I'm not in a position sitting here today to tell you whether we can or can't. I know that Hampton, just from my brief research, I know that Hampton and Newport News have some regulations, but they aren't, they aren't to the extent of you just can't feed a feral cat. They have certain conditions attendant to your feeding those feral cats. And I know that in two thousand and thirteen, a case went all the way up to the Supreme Court of Virginia as a result of a Henrico County attempt to regulate the feeding of feral cats. And it was pursuant to the zoning ordinance. And in that case, Henrico County lost, and the person who was cited, uh, for violating the zoning ordinance for feeding some feral cats was, at least in that case, vindicated. So if we're going to pursue, and I'm not saying we can't do this, if we're gonna pursue a regulatory avenue vis-à-vis feral cats, I think we have to do it very carefully to make sure that's as defensible as possible, because I don't want to lose a cat case. So.
I, I think animal control should come out and capture these cats and either preserve them somewhere or euthanize them.
Well, and that's one of the, in, in my limited research, it's called TNR. It's trap, neuter, and release. Uh, and certainly, the county can get in the business of TNR. Um, but we'd have to fund it.
They have a cat house.
Well, that's a whole nother, uh, subject. But, but we could do that. We could do a TNR where we trap or, or provide traps to the good citizens to utilize in, in humane way, trap the, the feral cats, have them neutered, and they're released. But great thought would have to be put into that program because, among other things, we'd have to make sure that it was properly run, and we'd have to fund it or make sure it was funded. As, as it stands right now, it's my understanding that county doesn't, isn't in the business of TNR.
So what remedy does this property owner have for these cats coming to her property and defecating and urinating on her property? Other than maybe taking matters in her own hands and saying, okay?
She could probably do a TNR where she traps them and she...
Animal Control said she couldn't do that.
What's that?
Animal Control said she could not do that.
Well, I, I certainly would want to speak with animal control to find the basis for that, but if a, if a wildcat came on my property, I think I pretty much have a right to trap it in a humane way.
You want to hear something funny?
And then, and then have it neutered and then returned.
Well, with all due respect, what the animal control people told this person was, you have to have five witnesses that shows that those cats defecated and urinated on her property. Unless you had five witnesses that, this is the truth, it's my constituent, and I was over there and I've seen these, I've seen what these cats have done to her property.
That's one witness.
So I'm one, one witness.
I don't, I don't see that they, uh...
No, that's not, it's not in this.
What I recommend is, I, I know it's getting...
I know we're getting late.
What, what I recommend is that, I think this is serious. I, I'm not laughing because I don't think it's serious. I'm laughing because five people don't have to watch a cat defecate to prove it defecating. Um, I, I think it's, I think it's serious, and I think we need to look at controlling the feral cat population. They've done it in Hampton, or they're trying to do it in Hampton, they've done it, or they're trying to do it in Newport News. It's a problem, and everyone recognizes it a problem. I'm just saying that right now, I have not done the research because I didn't anticipate the question.
No, no.
And we haven't, we haven't formulated a, a proper regulatory scheme that fits Gloucester because Gloucester's not Newport News and we're not Hampton. So, thank God.
Could I make, can I make a comment?
Yeah.
I had a conversation with the chief animal control officer this morning, and, and the, um, it's not that they, there has to be five people see the cat defecate, that's not accurate. So what you're, what you've been told...
I'm not a constituent of the county.
Right, it's not accurate. So I think if you want to talk about the options, maybe we could have, um, him at a future meeting and talk about...
That would be, yes, absolutely.
Yeah, let's, let's do that, and let's move on this particular issue because that is obviously a problem. It's gonna take a lot more research, and as Mr. Wilmot said, we need to be really careful that we do this in a fashion that doesn't get us in trouble, but does attack the problem.
And I'll have my constituent if she, if she's willing to go out and talk.
So we...
So that's a summary of the proposed changes. We, you could table it, you could set the public hearing on it. It's not a rush rush, but it's ready if you're ready.
Okay, folks, what would you like to do, since this will put us in, I guess, in the same situation with the state? Yeah, Mr. Weinberger?
If I remember correctly, when we talked about the money that we gave the Humane Society, wasn't one of the primary things that they did for the county was control feral cats? They have a cat room at the shelter just for cats, it's air-conditioned, it has everything. Remember, they had, they said there were counties that, that had schools that weren't air-conditioned, but the cat room at the shelter had to be air-conditioned because of the regulations, and I mean, I'm wondering where our feral cat people are.
I agree, I think, again, this is a problem that we need further information, but I'd like to move forward, and, you know, because we got, we got a ten o'clock, I mean, an eleven o'clock sort of deadline, we may have to extend it.
I move it.
We will.
I move.
You move? Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, Mr., I mean, Ms. Garten? Mr. Hudson, I guess there's further discussion.
I mean, if, are we better off waiting and let you look at this more before we-
It's certainly an option, but it, even though it's a subset of your animal control and welfare ordinance, it's a very discreet and insular subset, so I think it might be wise, if it's okay with y'all, to just do these amendments, and we can treat the cats-
Okay, Ms. Garten, hold the board, please.
And this is the motion to authorize the public hearing to discuss-
That's correct.
Mr. Orth?
Yes.
Mr. Crisco?
Yes.
Mr. Bazani?
Yes.
Mr. Weinberger?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay, item G, discussion of legislative priorities for the 2015 General Assembly, Ms. Garten.
Let's see, what page are we on, I'm sorry? You on page one fifty-three? We put together a proposed list of items that you might want to consider as this year's legislative platform, it's pretty much the same as last year. Number one is still trying to get the water and sewer, sewer connection capability. Number two is to agree with VACO's legislative plat, platform, which you did last year. Three is to encourage the state to fully fund the Virginia Juvenile, Juvenile Community Crime Control Act. Four has to do with timing on the introduction of bills that have a fiscal impact on the locality, and five is new, which is supporting funding for the development of the Middle Peninsula State Park. I believe that was introduced last year, but didn't get, make it into the budget, so those are the five items.
Okay, thanks, Ms. Garten. Questions for Ms. Garten from the board regarding these particular issues? Mr. Weinberger?
And I have to ask you this, Ms. Garten, the, the only resolution that I see in here is the one for us asking for authorization to require connection to the water and sewer. Is that the only resolution that we have in this bundle of stuff that you gave us?
That's a resolution that you've already passed, so that would be just attached to your legislative platform-
Okay.
As, as material, all you have to do in this case, there's not a resolution for you to pass tonight, it's just to, a motion to approve that legislative agenda.
To keep pushing, is that what it is?
Yes. You, you can either move to approve this legislative platform, or you can modify it, or you can not do anything, you don't even have to have a legislative platform if you don't want to.
All right, so this is the first time I've lived this experience. So, the question is, when does this need to be done by, and what is the effect of it? Is this just a letter to our representatives, or?
We send it to our-
This is what we of the county expect our legislators to do.
Well, right, these are the things that we're asking them to focus on.
So, when do they need to know that?
Before the General Assembly session starts, and if they introduce bills early, it's what, is it December one?
It certainly has to be by the end of December.
Yeah, but isn't there a date in January when they get together that they, it's a final submission of bills? So, they can still put bills all the way through? Yeah? Mr. Hudson?
The one thing we're looking here is at the first day of the introduction there. I mean, and that-
I don't know, I just wouldn't want to postpone it until then. This is October seventh, I would hope that you would have your legislative agenda to them by the beginning of December, or mid-December.
I would like to bake this one a little bit further.
Okay, you want to hold off on this until maybe November? Yeah, let's, let's put this off. Okay, we'll put it back on the November agenda. Okay, board appointments, please, one eighty-four. We have some vacancies, and do we have any appointments for these vacancies? There were the Clean Community, Parking Rec, and Tourism First. Do we have any appointments? Okay, any others? We don't have any others, okay, so we'll hold off. We have Mr. Weinberger regarding Planning Commission issue, want to bring that up, please?
Yeah, we have, we're going to do a little jock-in, and what I'm going to do is, I'm going to, Larry Dame, the chairman of the Planning Commission, resigned, when was it, Ann, a few months ago? Last month, and I need to reappoint somebody in his position, so what I'm going to do is I would like to appoint someone who's already on the Planning Commission in another district, to, to my district, and that's Mr. Seth Baldwin, who's my next-door neighbor. So, and he consented to be realigned with the Petsworth District, but he would be serving out Mr. Dame's rest of his term, and at that point in time, I'll, I'll reappoint, and what that will do is that will open up an at-large position, and, and doing that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Crisco.
What we'll need is a motion, correct, to appoint the gentleman to fill Mr. Dame's position-
Correct.
-in your district.
Yeah, he, he's, he's in my district. He's my next-door neighbor, and when I came on the board and left the Planning Commission, Mr. Crisco, it was his nomination, I was his appointee, so he, he appointed Mr. Baldwin, and I'm going to take Mr. Baldwin from him, and I'm going to give him an opening for at-large.
Okay, and Mr. Crisco?
Yes?
Basically, you had decided to let the Planning Commission reduce by attrition-
Right.
So, you don't, I don't think you've been appointing-
Yeah, I had to research that, unfortunately. I had the, the same- Yeah, I had the initial, I had the same initial response that, that Ann had, and that was, this board has decided to reduce the size of the Planning Commission, but to do so by attrition. Unfortunately, the state code seems to mandate that when someone resigns, you have to appoint someone to fill their unexpired term, which to me is unfortunate, because it would have been an ideal opportunity to accomplish what y'all had set in motion, which was to reduce the size by attrition, but because of the apparently mandatory language in the state code that says when someone resigns, that you have to appoint someone to complete their unexpired term, I, it seems like we have to do that. And I think that's what Mr. Bazani had thought, and what Mr. Weinberger thought, so I wasn't alone in my thoughts.
And Ms. Crisco?
Then I would like to make the motion that we appoint Mr. Kenny Richardson to the at-large position.
Do we have to vote on my appointment?
Can we do them together, or do we need separate motions, Ms., Mr. Wilmot?
You can do them together, I hope you all agree.
Okay, let's do them together. Do you have that, Ms. Garten, what we're going to do? Ask a second. Okay, is there, is there any further discussion on that? Does everyone realize, recognize what we're going to do? You straight on that?
What are the expirations?
I don't know, I don't know. Ann, do you know when Larry Dame's expiration is?
Seth is going to do Dame's. We'll deal with that.
Whatever, yeah.
So, we have a motion?
We need a vote on that.
We have a motion, it's been a second, we're discussing it, any further discussion on what we're going to do?
Can we clarify, because we kind of had two different motions, can we get a motion and a second?
A motion to appoint Seth to fill Larry Dame's position, and then Mr. Richardson to fill-
No, do, do, do Mr. Baldwin's first, and then we'll do-
Okay.
Then who did the second for Mr. Weinberger's?
Okay.
Right.
Petsworth, correct.
Okay, is there, okay, all those in favor of that particular motion, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's all seven oh. Okay, the next one.
The motion to appoint Mr. Kenny Richardson to the at-large position.
Second? Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye? Opposed? Okay, any other board appointments?
Yes, I have, that's an issue with me.
I, I, I have notified one of the members of the Planning Commission that, that because of absences in the last two years, this, this one individual's missed five meetings in 2013, and he's missed five meetings so far in 2014, and he's in my district. I have spoken to him and asked him to tender his resignation, I have not heard back from him, so rather than, and I told him that we had a consensus on the board, that if he did not tender his resignation, at least before the twenty-first in our work, work session, that, that we would take action to replace him. So, what I'd like to do is, again, I'm going to go back to him and ask him to tender his resignation, and then at the twenty-first meeting, or at your pleasure, Mr. Chairman, reappoint a new person to take their place, to finish out their term. I don't have any, with this person being absent all the time, I don't have representation in the York District on the Planning Commission.
Okay, well, I'll talk to you about the appropriate time to do that, whether it's the twenty-first or the next meeting, but we'll do it.
At your pleasure.
Yes, sir. Okay, county administrator items, Ms. Garten.
I do have one item, if I can find it. Ann Ducey Ortiz asked me to mention that we have scheduled a meeting to discuss the hazard mitigation open space parcels on October the fourteenth at seven PM, which is a Tuesday, and it's going to be at Achilles Elementary School. Is there any more detail you want me to give? Okay.
Mr. Wilmot? Okay, Mr. Crisco, you have a question?
Ms. Garten, can we do the appropriate advertisement in case more than two board members are present for that?
Okay, Mr. Wilmot? Any items from you?
Yes.
Okay, boards and commissioner reports? None? Any matters presented by the board, Mr. Bazani?
I'd, I'd like to go back to Ms. Mickles' presentation on FEMA properties, that FEMA has provided funding to the county to purchase properties in Gloucester County. If you, if you, if you look at this chart, and look at some of these properties, as a federal taxpayer, you should be outraged, some of these properties have been assessed at fifty-five thousand, the owner was paid a hundred and two. Another property was paid, was assessed at twenty-two thousand, this property owner was paid a hundred and six thousand dollars for this property. Another property was assessed at ninety thousand, and this property owner was paid two hundred thousand dollars for the property. It seems to me that we should not be in the real estate business, and I think in our next, you know, in one of our agenda items, we need to stop this program.
I think we were going to bring this up, and as part of our discussion at the workshop work meeting on the twenty-first, and that will be embedded in that discussion, so all this information you have will certainly be very applicable.
Because as a taxpayer, I'm outraged, you know? People are walking away with bags of money in their pocket.
We have a work session, and we'll have all these items for discussion during that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, any other items, Mr. Crisco?
Yeah, gentlemen, I know that we sort of went through the legislative priorities. Part of that was the VACO platform, I will be attending that conference, if there's anything that you would like added, discussed, or get more information for, if you let me know, I'll be more than happy to either take that to them, or, or get the information that you want, so just let me know that between now and that, our first November meeting, because that conference falls directly on the heels of that.
Any other items, Mr. Hudson?
I talked with Ms. Ducey Ortiz earlier this evening, and about, I've had a constituent call wanting to have fowl at his house, and he can't have fowl-
Chickens.
Not cats, fowls. The cats will eat them, though. But anyway, I would like for you to evaluate, I know you said that they're not allowed at single, properties, zone, single-family, but if you could look at that and see if we could put a restriction or a requirement of a certain amount of acreage, or proximity or something like that, just so we can look at it and go, it's not a rush, but I'd like you to, you know, December, January.
If you've been reading the paper, many communities are really tackling this issue right now, and allowing homeowners primarily have chickens, but not the roosters.
Not the roosters.
Not the roosters, so, okay, any other items, because I just have one, just for information, all of you were aware that last year, the churches organized a guest program to deal with the homeless, and that program ran from January fifteenth through March thirty-first. I attended the first training session on Sunday at Susanna Wesley, that program will begin this year starting December first, and run through March thirty-first. Last year, it was running from seven in the evening through seven in the morning, they now have a shelter that they'll allow individuals to stay during the day. It's a pretty impressive program, I think last year, they had thirty-four hundred volunteer hours, they're expecting to double that this year, and it's being essentially coordinated among all the different churches, and so again, they have two more training sessions, but again, I just wanted to make you aware of the fact that we've got a lot of very wonderful individuals who are very concerned about the homeless in this community. Any other items?
Where's, where's the shelter at?
Well, the, the day shelter, it's, I'm not sure, I think it's one of the houses up near the old, earlier, what? The Moose Lodge.
Oh, I built that house.
Yeah. Oh, you're the one that said there's so much missing?
It used to be in a circle of friends.
But it's still standing.
Yeah, it used to be-
Okay, anyway, they're renovating that, that building, and that will be where the day shelter, so again, they have two more training sessions, and, Mr. Meyer?
Just a quick question, what's the status of the training session, strategic session?
Ms. Garten, we need to get a, an evening session set up pretty quickly.
Right, I have the, the name, one name that was suggestion, suggested, and I haven't contacted them yet.
Okay, let's, let's work on that and get that done as soon as, yeah, Mr. Bazani?
Mr. Meyer, I think we want to talk about the, the budget analyst position, we want to come in?
On the finance director or the budget analyst?
Budget analyst.
Budget analyst.
We're, we're working on the job description, so that we can post the position.
And how soon do you think it might get posted?
I'm hoping in the next week or two.
Okay.
Okay, not to be, not to be snarky, but we met on the ninth of July to discuss the attributes, if you will, of the budget analyst, that was a hundred and eighteen days ago, and it would be nice to have the budget analyst in place, and maybe it's too late now, to work on next year's budget, so I'm wondering if we can accelerate it to the maximum extent practical.
Can you work with the HR people and see if we can move as rapidly as possible to have that person here as we begin the next budget cycle, please? Okay, Mr. Hudson?
I'd like to make the motion that we extend past eleven o'clock.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's only quarter after eight.
Okay, is there, all in favor of that, to extend past eleven if we have to? All aye?
Aye.
Opposed, okay. Okay, so if there are no more matters, we're going to go into closed meeting, Mr. Wilmot, can you call us?
Yes, sir, whereas the Gloucester County Board of Supervisors desires to discuss a particular subject in closed meeting during the course of its meeting of October seven, 2014, and whereas the nature of the subject is a claim and litigation, Solb LLC v. Gloucester County, associated with a petition for release, relief from erroneous tax assessments and consultation with legal counsel regarding the matter, the discussion of same in closed meeting is expressed and permitted by virtue of Virginia Code, Section two point two dash thirty-seven oh eight, eleven A seven. Now therefore be it resolved that the Gloucester County Board of Supervisors does hereby convene in closed meeting for the purpose herein expressed pursuant to the legal authority here in recite.
herein reciting. Board of Supervisors has completed its discussion in closed meeting and now desires to continue its open meeting, and whereas only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting were heard, discussed, or considered during the closed meeting, and the only subjects heard, discussed, or considered in said closed meeting were the matters identified in the resolution by which it was convened, now, therefore, be it resolved that the Gloucester County Board of Supervisors does hereby reconvene in open meeting at its meeting of October 7, 2014, and certifies the matter set forth in Virginia Code, Section 2.2-3712D.
So...
I think you have to take a roll call vote for that, right? Mister Bazani?
Yes.
Mister Weinberger?
Yes.
Mister Meyer?
Yes.
Mister James?
Yes.
Mister Hudson?
Yes.
Mister Orth?
Yes.
Mister Crisco?
Yes.
That would be with the box checked, that the agreed consent order is acceptable, and I'm authorized to submit it to the court. Thank you.
Yes.
Mister Meyer?
Yes.
Mister James?
Yes.
Mister Hudson?
Yes.
Mister Orth?